He is one of the friendliest, most cheerful students at our school. He is always smiling. Jack's teacher says he is excited to learn and always has a positive upbeat attitude. Jack is a good friend to everyone and always includes others. Jack enjoys going to specials, learning about animals, and reading books by his favorite author, Erin Blabby. Outside of school, Jack does track, hip hop dance, musical theater, and Strive Ninja. He is also an active participant in the Franklin Future Leaders, a group that recognizes the importance of community by learning how they can support the community and how the community supports them. In his own words, "Jack is the funniest person in the world." And we are so glad to have him as a member of our Jefferson community. So Jack, if you'd like to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right, Jack, you can go right ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jack. You guys can get out of here, go home, get to bed. As is customary, we will pause for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Routine business review of agenda. Everything looks okay, everyone? Sorry, we just came from a workshop, so we're all a little flustered. Doctor, nope. Citizens comments. If we have any citizens who would like to speak, let me just get my little. Okay. In the spirit of open communication, the committee will hold the public participation segment about matters within the school committee's purview and not related to an agenda item. Citizens' comments is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens and the school committee. It is intended to offer citizens an opportunity to express their opinions on issues of school committee business. The committee will listen to but not respond to any comment made. A committee member may add an agenda item to a future meeting as a result of a citizen's comment. If you could state your name and address and three minute limit.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Dashah Vadera, and I live at 35 Marvin Ave. I am here with a reason, with follow-up to understanding the root of why the school committee and the town council, which of course you guys are unable to answer on that behalf, decided to back Senator Becker Roush. I've appeared before my Board of Health on Wednesday with our family's medical records and following suit with the details of Senator Becker Roush's bill that actually states that the Board of Health would be responsible for dictating who receives a medical and/or religious exemption. I am very passionate about mental health. I have dedicated my life to really breaking that down personally with my family and to help protect them mentally. Our family has been in certain situations where we do need a medical exemption and our practice stopped writing them, and now we are bound by a religious exemption. I was under the impression as well that it is your responsibility to listen to all the people in the town. So I was very shocked to read your code of ethics to then understand that you guys were endorsing this person. As you know, I also ran for school committee here as well. It was very hard knowing on candidate night before even people had a choice to really state where they stood on some things before the public. I see Senator Becker Roush and Jeff Roy taking photos, which each and every single one of you. So I'm very confused significantly. I also thought it was really strange that the Board of Health also had no awareness of what the details of the bill specifically said, especially considering the fact that that would be their job. I had the opportunity, I know that Franklin Public Schools have the legislative forum, so we have the fifth one coming up. I had the liberty of watching 2018, which Karen Spilka talks very highly about the importance on mental health and how it's a direct, mental health is a direct correlation to substance abuse. In 2008, 19, Dr. Roush, I mean, sorry, Dr. Sarah Hearn states a statistic from Boston Children Hospital dated from 2017. One in five children have mental health issues. One in four adults have mental health issues. Our family has a direct correlation and actual x-rays to prove that our family's mental health issues are contributed to breathing issues. So I'm very confused at the same time too, why we are also masking children and masking adults. So I am here on those behalf so that way I can publicly be heard. I sent each and every single one of you an email with my questions and concerns. I've heard nothing, so I have chosen to show up in person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to? Name and address?
Yep, Megan Benson, 19 Wood Drive. Also kind of going along with this, it's in regard to the endorsement of Senator Roush. You know, fully, I'm fully aware that everybody, you know, has an individual right or, you know, freedom to certainly endorse whatever political candidate they see fit. But I think it's a little bit different when a school committee endorses a candidate altogether as a committee. Because your job is to keep our children's interest in mind. So that's the big thing. So what I want to do now is just read parts of a letter that I actually sent to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee members. And you know, it starts off explaining how the endorsement was announced. So Senator Roush announced this endorsement by tagging each and every one of your political campaign Facebook pages. And then in her actual endorsement cites, you know, the support of partners and state and local government. So clearly, this was a committee endorsement, which would go against the Franklin School Committee Code of Ethics. Section BCA, point number six explicitly states that the school committee has a community responsibility to accept the office as a committee member as means of unselfish service with no intent to quote-unquote "play politics" in any sense of the word, or to benefit personally from his/her committee activities. So endorsing a state senator really is nothing short of playing politics. In addition to proving that you, you know, have a clear political agenda, the committee has also proven that you've all failed to remember, quote, "that he/she represents the entire community at all times," which is also explicitly stated in section BCA of the Franklin School Committee Policy, point number five. To assume that the entire Franklin School District would also support Senator Becker Roush is not only unethical according to this policy, but not within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities or interests. Also, this endorsement seems to go against section AC of your policy, the people in their school district. The committee's support for Senator Roush indicates that all school committee members are in favor of bill S2516, which, thank God, was voted down and is now considered dead. But that bill would have made masking our kids in school a law, ages two through grade 12. I know I've personally reached out to each and every one of you, two times at least, asking for your opinion on mandatory masking versus parent choice. You all refused to respond, but then you go and endorse a state senator who not only is not in favor of having it be a choice and in favor of parents' freedom, but also who wants to make it a law. So then our children technically could be breaking a law. I mean, it's radical. It's, it's, it's not okay. So basically, at this point, I think you owe it all to the parents of Franklin.
Then thank you.
And I would, I think that you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think at this point.
No.
Would anyone like to be?
Yeah, this isn't a public forum. Here, you can read it. If you, if. If you could just state your name and address.
Sure, Jennifer Clark, 53, Crocker Ave, Franklin. So why couldn't I give her my three minutes if we're talking about the same thing?
Is this going into your three minutes or?
Yeah, no, definitely want an answer.
We don't open.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay. So just to talk about kind of what Megan went off of, I guess, I recently saw that there was a flyer showed that the entire school council endorsed a politician. This is incredibly unsettling, and I don't think I have to remind everyone that when it seems to be that as a community and as a nation, we're more politically divided than ever. I guess for me, realizing that his/her primary responsibility is to the students. Also, accept the office as a committee member as an unselfish service that is not meant to play politics in any sense of the form. So what I don't understand is you don't represent the entire community. I'm sure we can all agree on that, right? Okay. So I think that you guys playing politics undermines what we're all trying to do here. Our town chose for you guys to be our voices. You're not my voice. I want my own choice for my kids. That's not your choice, that's mine. So I think we all need to kind of not interpret what you think I want unless, of course, you come to my house and sit with me and talk to me, because I don't know any of you. I didn't vote for any of you, I don't know you. So I guess for me is, you know, I don't want to be rude, but kind of stay in your own lane a little bit. And don't think that everybody in Franklin agrees with what you guys are trying to do. I want my own choice for my own kids. I know some people here do as well. There's a lot of people on Zoom that feel the same way, that couldn't make it tonight. I guess it would be nice if you answered emails from individuals that you clearly ignore, which is rude. And I'd like an answer. I've been here for 10 years, and it seems like every time I listen to a meeting or come see you guys, there's never any closure. It's just, oh, let's talk about it next time. Oh, let's talk about it next time. What are we doing? I mean, other towns and other cities, Rhode Island is lifting their mask mandate. I mean, I don't know what we need to do differently unless Senator Roush is in your back pocket and kind of wants you guys to do whatever she says. I don't know, but for me, I'm not a big fan of that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Name, address, and three minutes, please.
Ruthiano Sullivan, 175 Oak Street. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I just want to say that the, I feel like Becker Roush is being sort of dragged through the mud. And that law that was voted down in 2020 in the height of the pandemic, when we were most at risk, was, I think, to enable teachers and administrators to not have to be policing in the schools. So that was really the purpose of that. I think everyone here has done a fantastic job, especially Dr. Hearn, when it comes to adhering to the CDC guidelines and keeping our kids safe. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? You could just name an address?
Jackie Maciel, Elm Street. Okay, I have two topics. So I'll do the first one. I'd like to talk about mask mandates. This was, I think, last week showing the states that have, still have mask mandates for schools. There were 14 states and of course, the city of DC. Since then, Connecticut, Delaware, New Jersey, and according to the news on BZ Tonight, a fourth state have dropped their mandates in schools. But, you know, they say they're dropping their mandates, and you guys, since you're now on the school committee, you know all the little strings that are attached to the, all the monies that come. So who knows if they're dropped or they're not dropped? Okay, so I don't know, is it fake news? There's a lot of that going on. The second is, this was in the New York Times. We know that's a liberal rag. Anyways, they posted the cases of COVID of masked versus unmasked students. And if you look at when the flu virus called Omicron arrived, this part of the graph shows the difference. The line below is the unmasked, and the dotted line is the masked. And there's a significant lower number of schools that have optional mask requirements. Gee, maybe being slightly exposed to germs will improve your body's immune system. I think they've done studies like that, because I heard about that back in, in the 60s, in college, in a psychology class. So maybe you guys should do some homework. The last is about the Franklin United PAC. People know about that. They're the ones that helped get you elected. Well, when they put out their, when they put out their report of fundraising people, this was filed in the town clerk's office on October 26th. We have, let's see, Colin Cass, $50, Karen Landis, $50. Oh, Rebecca Roush, she lives in Franklin, right? She lives in Needham, $100. Jeff Roy, well, he is a local boy, fair-haired child, $100. And now, guess what? The Senate President, who was Senator in our split town, $500. But she's no longer going to be a senator in this town, because she's got her own district. So, and then there's somebody called Michael Walker Jones, $250. So all these big-time donors totaled $1,050. The total PAC money was $1,220. So I don't know if you guys knew, they paid for you guys to get in those seats, because they had organizations when out, got 1,800 votes for you guys, which most of you won by. So now, is it time to pay Rebecca back by endorsement? I don't know, is this pay-to-play or is it not? But it's a good thing you guys all got your masks on your mouth, on your face, on your noses, because I think it might be covering up some stuff on your noses.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Arielle Shear, 66th Road. Like Ruth Ann, I wasn't intended to speak tonight. I'm just fairly aggravated by hearing these people talking and cheering for each other and talking about how immunity is going to be what's necessary to get us through this. If we didn't have science, we would have a life expectancy of about 50, and two out of three of our children would die before becoming adults. So I'm going to go with science personally. That said, I am noticing that you're all wearing masks tonight, even though you don't have to be. And I was thinking to myself, if I perhaps called each one of you up on the telephone and said, hey, are you going to wear a mask tonight? And you each said to me, yes, individually, without knowing that the other person said, that would be reflective of your personal choice. However, your action as a school committee, if I remember correctly, not too long ago, was to listen to the community when they asked if you would push forward with this allowance of kids being able to take their masks off at the high school, if we reached a certain threshold, which we did, and a policy was put in place. And when the committee was asked, let's vote on this, even though you're all wearing masks personally, you voted to allow other people, under the guidelines of DESI, to take their masks off. I think that people's memories can get very short, and I think that there needs to be recognition about the fact that even though that may not be your personal preference, you listened to the community and you did what they asked for. And I, for one, am very appreciative of that.
Name and address, three minutes, please.
Hi, Amy Danahy, 16, Mary Ellen Lane. I'm going to try to be short. My family has been part of the Franklin Public Schools for the last 12 years. All three of my kids started at ECTC, then went to Kennedy, now at Horace Mann, and next year will have a high schooler, which I'm kind of in denial about. It's been awesome. When I think about the amount of love that my children have experienced from teachers, specialists, and administrators, and even school committee members, I get really emotional. I'm truly grateful to each of you. And I have to say, I'm really embarrassed about some of the things that have happened these last two years. About two years ago, I unfollowed pretty much every social media page in Franklin for my mental health. In addition to being a mom, I'm also a teacher, and I just couldn't bear reading some of the things that people were saying about educators and school committee members. It's two years later, and I'm emotionally exhausted, not because I have to wear masks or that because my students have to wear a mask, but because of the disrespect, bullying, and negativity that I have to hear on a daily basis, mostly from people who are not even educators and don't know what we do every single day. I don't think that these people, many who are here today, realize that what they are doing is more harm than good. In a time when teachers and support, praise, and respect more than ever, they are breaking down our spirits for a cause that is state-mandated and out of the control of people they are harassing you guys. I really hope that when this is over, which it looks like will be soon, thank God, that some of that energy shifts to helping instead of contemplating of other people, the same people who love your kids every day in one way or another. Maybe join the PCC or send your kids' teachers a note thanking them, or donate money to the Franklin Education Foundation, which funds so many programs for our children. Just something positive, please. To the school committee, I'm sorry that the negative voices have been louder than the rest of us, and I'm truly impressed with the kindness and grace you have shown to people who have not given you the same respect, mostly because I don't think I would be able to do it. So I just want you to know how grateful I am to all of you and to all of the teachers who are here today for just loving my children and giving them the best possible education. Thank you.
Is there, is anyone else in the audience? Okay. Just name and address, please.
Ted Cormier Ledger, one of your town counselors and avid supporters from 3 Ashbury Drive in Franklin. I want to echo what Mrs. Danahy and others have said, and thank each and every one of you for everything that you're doing, for everything that you have to listen to, because you are here for everybody. So you have to take the good and the bad, and you take it with grace. And the school department and administration and teachers take it with grace on behalf of our kids, so thank you. There's an awful lot of misinformation out there, not just about the virus, but about all sorts of things going through our schools, going through our country. There's, we're divided more than we've ever been. And I hope that the future looks a little bit better when we can finally come past the virus, right? When we can finally say, here we are, we did all the right things. We didn't succumb to bullying and choice, because the people asking for choice aren't backed by science, they're backed by choice. So we, I applaud your tenacity. I applaud that you're being strong-willed through all of this. I'm sorry that you continue to be barraged with hurtful, hateful things online, and sometimes even at these meetings. It's nice to see civility tonight. It's okay that we disagree. But I ran on a platform of supporting public education, so I am here putting my money where my mouth is to say you have my support, both as a dad, as a citizen, as your town counselor. Keep doing a great job, and thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? I guess I will.
My name is Ricky Clark, 53, Gilley Ave, here in Franklin. I had zero intention on speaking tonight, but just listening to the past couple, you know, community members, I just found this absolutely mind-blowing. We talked about misinformation, and you can go on the Franklin website, a population of 36,000 people, there's been 6,000 cases of COVID, 65 deaths, which is unfortunate, but zero of those deaths have been ages 0 to 54 years of age. Why are our kids in masks? Why? Why are they in masks? Kids with learning disabilities can't even see their friends smile. They may, they may, they may have a speech delay. They can't even read their teacher's lips. They can't even see their teacher's smile. You want to talk about relationships between teachers and children? Imagine going to school every day and not being able to see your teacher smiling. That's sad. That's sad. This isn't the world that I thought I'd raise my children in. And I'm very ashamed to have, you know, a choice or feel like we have a choice for our kids, but be belittled by it on every second. And you could say that, you know, the virus of the pandemic may be over, but ultimately, once Governor Baker lifts this mandate, it could fall on this group here. And their intentions backing Becker Roush is already clear, what they want to do with our children. Unethically, the bugs that are spread, pedophilia that are spread, this is, this is terrible. And the fact that people don't see this is absolutely mind-blowing, absolutely mind-blowing. The unethical or the ethics violation for backing Becker Roush, there will be consequences for that. We have done our research, and you can bet that that will be coming. Questions that I have is, is it the school committee that determines if the mask mandate will continue through the towns? I know you can't answer that, but if it is your decision, why? If you guys want to go, want to trust the science and trust the data, the data's right there. Zero to 54 years of age, zero deaths. Take the damn mask off the kids. If it makes you feel comfortable, teachers, wear the mask. Take it off my son. Two, what are the metrics for measuring if you think that the mask will be needed or not in school? The data's there, again, you guys just feel to look at it. Three, already kind of mentioned it, not sure why the decision would fall with you guys. Board of Health already made their intentions clear. The backing Becker Roush, you guys already did that, too.
I'm 66, should I take my mask off now?
We need to add name.
Am I safe?
Name and address, please.
Guess what?
If you could just state, if you could just state. If you could just state your name and address, please.
My name is Carol O'Neill, at 11 Colt Road in Franklin.
Thank you.
I, it's almost impossible for me to, I came in late, for me to hear what I'm hearing. Almost impossible. All I can say is I'm going to wear my mask. It's no big deal.
No, thank you.
I have grandchildren in the schools. And you want to know something? It's no big deal. I can't believe, after all I have seen in my history, that you people, you young ones, would think this is the biggest thing going on in your lives, to have your children masked. Are you kidding me? Do you have any idea as to what? I was eight when I was sent home because the president was shot to death. Do not talk to me about whether you're going to mask your kids or not.
Is there anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Is there? All right, moving along, Dr. Hearn. I know student reps couldn't be here.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Spencer. Our student reps could not be here this evening. They have some commitments. But I do have some high school highlights to share, as well as my superintendent's report. So second semester has started at Franklin High School. It's a new term, and for some, they will be in new semesterized courses. Seniors are submitting the official names for their diplomas at this time, and there is a lot of planning for the end of the year underway. Juniors are planning for the prom, and sophomores and freshmen are planning for banquets. Course selection is underway for underclassmen. They are meeting with their counselors over the next few weeks to select their courses for next year. We also had a presentation the other night for the class of 2026, who is entering Franklin High School as freshmen. Guidance Department, I'm sorry, I would appreciate, thank you. The guidance department, the high school administration, department heads, and our department directors hosted a webinar for students and families last week. The meeting was recorded, and the presentation has been sent out to families who couldn't make it. But this webinar provided a wealth of information about scheduling courses, how best to think about putting together your freshman classes, as well as classes for future years. Uh, and I'll put the presentation and the PowerPoint in my. Report that goes up on the web. Winter athletic teams are having excellent successes with their games and matches. And we have a couple of music events coming up earlier tonight and on February tenth. Uh, there is a concert hour recital at the Franklin High School Auditorium. And next week at seven PM, uh, there is a musical theater showcase. So some exciting things happening at the high school that I think the student representatives would have otherwise talked about. I'm sure they would have had some other good things to contribute. This Friday, we have a half day for professional development. Um, it is a building-based professional development day. But it's theme oriented, um, consistent with district initiatives, uh, from the district improvement and school improvement goals. Um, at ECDC, they'll be looking at an analysis of the DECA data, which is a social and emotional assessment for preschoolers. To examine students' SEL growth and then make adjustments to their practice in order to support those little learners. And at K to eight, uh, the teachers will be working together to do a second round of analysis of the NWEA MAP data. Which is in English Language Arts and Mathematics. This new learning will help them to adjust their practice, uh, in the classroom based on what the growth data is showing. And in grades nine through twelve, Mr. Hannah and his team will continue professional development around. Developing a guaranteed and viable curriculum and, uh, our educators who will, will work together in their course partners. This week is National School Counselors Week. We want to acknowledge the incredible hard work of our adjustment counselors, school psychologists and guidance counselors. School counselors are vital members of the education team and maximize student success. They help all students apply academic achievement strategies, manage emotions and apply interpersonal skills. They also assist with planning for post-secondary options. They provide individual student academic planning and goal setting. School counseling lessons are provided in the classroom and small groups and individually. They provide short-term and long-term SEL interventions and they collaborate with team members towards student success. Um, we are so appreciative of our counselors and all that they do, not only today and this week, but every day. At Horace Mann Middle School, we had a special visit this week. Uh, author Ruta Zepetis selected Horace Mann Middle School for a special virtual visit. To explore the hidden history of Romania highlighted in her new book, I Must Betray You, which is a historical thriller. This is her second virtual visit. She came five years ago for the all-in reading program. Miss Zepetis declined an honorarium and instead asked the community to buy books for Franklin children at a specific small local bookshop. Which I think is wonderful. Uh, other students from middle schools across the district were able to join. I saw a nice tweet from Annie Sullivan that it was the first assembly I think they've had in quite some time. And, uh, I know that they appreciated being part of the virtual visit as well. Would like to congratulate Jeff Ambrosini. Uh, he is Franklin High School's assistant, uh, baseball coach. And he has been named as, uh, the assistant coach of the year by the Massachusetts Baseball Coaching Association. And lastly, I just want to put a plug in for Thursday night. We have, um, elementary, uh, math night on. Thursday, February tenth from six to seven PM. Uh, it is going to be hosted, uh, online and presented by, uh, Dr. Tina Rogers, our direct director of curriculum for STEM. And our elementary math specialists. So this is designed related to K to five math. For families to learn more about illustrative math in particular. And again, that's going to be held virtually on Thursday evening. And that is my report.
Uh, community members and Camille, questions, comments? Dave? Al?
Just one question, um, about the session on the tenth. Is that posted on the, um, Facebook page for the school district?
I can check and make sure that it is. I'm not sure. I found it on, um, one of our elementary, uh, family newsletters.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you.
None, thank you.
Thanks very much, Dr. Ahern.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have guests and presentations.
Thank you. So we're gonna get, um, situated here because I've got a couple of different folks presenting with me. In the room, we are joined by Principal Sarah Clem from the Jefferson Elementary School. And Assistant Superintendent Lucas DeGirre and Director of Student Services, Paula Morano will also be presenting. And then, uh, as panelists on the webinar this evening, we have Dr. Linda Ashley. Who is our Director of Curriculum for ELA and Social Studies, uh, here in Central Office. We have Josh Hanna, the Franklin High School Principal. And we have Craig, two other guests, Craig Williams, uh, Remington Middle School Principal. And Kristin Latander Smith, she is our Director of Health and Wellness for the District. And I'm incredibly grateful for their time this evening in co-presenting, uh, this presentation on. Franklin Public Schools Diversity Equity and Inclusion Efforts. So I'm going to grab my packet. I think everybody's in place. And I'll just, I'm gonna kick us off and, and start. This presentation, I think, was initiated, uh, by the school committee in the workshop in the summer. Kind of specifically requesting and asking for a presentation on our diversity, equity and inclusion efforts. And, um. I will say, I think it's one of the hardest presentations I've ever put together in ten years as a central office administrator. And I've been, um, building administrator before that since two thousand and six. Uh, in part because I guess I'm proud to share, um, just how systemic, um, our work is. And I felt that over the past several weeks and putting this together, every time I visited a school, I wanted to add a new story. Uh, or a new observation that I was making about what I was seeing in the classroom. Um, but I also want to be really careful and, um, be sure to convey to our community. That it is with great humility that I also make this presentation or we also make this presentation, uh, to you. There is a lot of listening and learning, uh, that we do and reflecting on the actions and the steps that we take. And, um, I'm not going to pretend that we have it all right. But we are certainly trying to put our best of feet forward, uh, to listen, learn, act and reflect. For the betterment of all students, uh, in the Franklin Public Schools. Um. So without further ado, um, I just want to share a little bit about how we approach diversity, equity and inclusion in the Franklin Public Schools. And I would consider our work as like a Venn diagram. Um, so much of what you'll hear tonight are school-based efforts happening, um, on behalf of administrators, faculty, staff, families and students. Uh, and we also have a committee. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has been in place, uh, since last year. Uh, last year we had about sixty members. This year we have over forty administrators, students and faculty and staff. Um, we all have a common effort, um, collectively to affirm diversity, promote equity and foster inclusion. And, uh, I think what you'll hear tonight is mostly, uh, some things that are happening naturally, uh, in our school-based efforts aligned with school improvement and district improvement. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is certainly active. And I anticipate bringing back, uh, some outcomes from that committee at the end of the year as part of a district improvement plan update. So, uh, this next slide, I think, is, uh, an important foundation and basis for our work. Which is what we are striving to do in being a culturally proficient school district. And, uh, these notes came from a professional development session that we had for the entire district in September of two thousand and twenty. With, uh, Kalise Warnum of KW Diversity. Uh, and so with this foundation, we strive, uh, to take the time to listen, uh, to who students say they are and what their needs are. Too often the needs or the needs of the school system take precedence. So we are looking to uplift and amplify student voice. Achievement, outcome and opportunity gaps were present before we arrived, but we may not ignore them. And as educators, we must be willing to examine our individual and collective values, behaviors, policies and practices of our district. As we work towards becoming culturally proficient. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, um, began their work by crafting an equity statement. And defining diversity, equity and inclusion for the district. And a highlight related to diversity, uh, is that we aim to take a broad approach to what diversity means. Uh, identities, thoughts, ideas, perspectives and values, uh, including the fluidity that may exist. Uh, involving race, ethnicity, gender identity or expression. Sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, religious beliefs, culture, national origin, disability and cognitive styles. Um, so in this presentation, when we share our examples with you, uh, I think we're aiming to, um. Touch upon, uh, many of these different areas of diversity and identity. And so you'll see, uh, examples, uh, across multiple aspects here. In terms of equity, um, this is not an all-encompassing definition. But one of the things that we think is important is that, uh, equity, uh, involves, uh, providing opportunities and reducing barriers. So that each student, uh, is able to attain the attributes of Franklin's Portrait of a Graduate. And working towards inclusion, uh, is working towards that idea of belonging. Uh, which means that we're authentically seeking out valuing and respecting, uh, input of all. I thought it important to ground this work in Franklin's Portrait of a Graduate. Uh, these are some of the, um, descriptors that we've included, uh, for all students in the Franklin Public Schools to be working towards. Demonstrating social awareness through inclusivity and the consideration of various perspectives. Analyze, evaluate and synthesize relevant information from multiple perspectives, varied viewpoints and sources. Listens with an open mind and embraces a respectful, inclusive and culturally aware approach. And identifies and analyzes problems from multiple perspectives. And those problems could be social problems, um, that they're examining from multiple perspectives. Peppered throughout our presentation, you'll see a couple of quotes. But I liked this one, um, except for maybe the last word I would change. Uh, inclusive education seeks to address the learning needs of all children with a specific focus on those who are vulnerable to marginalization and exclusion. Therefore, the goal is to promote opportunities for all children to participate and be treated. This is equally, I'd probably substitute equitably, but it is not my quote. So I want to, um, ground this work in our students and share a little bit about the demographics of students in Franklin Public Schools. Um, again, I want to be clear that this work, uh, is designed to, um, instill. Those skills that I just described from the portrait of a graduate in each and every, each and every child. Uh, and so, um, we may have a particular focus on, um. Reducing barriers and, uh, including students who may have historically been marginalized. Uh, this is important work for each and every child in the Franklin Public Schools. Uh, in order for us to live in a interdependent and empathetic society. So first, starting out, um, with a few, uh, statistics regarding, um, race and ethnicity. So we are continuing to be a predominantly white, uh, student body, um, although that is changing, uh, a little bit over time. Uh, and we have seen more students identifying, um, as a person of color with seventeen point one percent. In the current DESI data. Uh, and that is a contrast, uh, to, uh, the percent of faculty and staff at one point seven, um, by a whole order of magnitude. Um, this will come up a bit later when we talk about efforts related to diversifying the educator workforce. And the value, uh, that, uh, exists, uh, research-based value that exists. When a student has, uh, a faculty and staff member, um, that they identify with and the, uh, outcomes, uh, related to student learning. Um, we are seeing, uh, particularly this year, uh, a big increase in the number of English learners we have in the district. So, although our overall population has gone down in the past decade, we've seen a fifty percent increase in English learners. Um, so, uh, we were about sixty or so English learners back in two thousand and twelve. And we currently have ninety-five English learners in our district this year. The other thing that I would note is our English learners, uh, we have more students who have, um, an interrupted formal education. Uh, or are newcomers. Um, and so they have, um, lower proficiency levels of English. In two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, uh, the Department of Education, um, collected data about students identifying as non-binary. And in that year, we had two students. Um, and for this year, um, we have nine students identifying as non-binary, uh, in the district. If you looked at the Department of Ed's data on economics, um, it is very hard to draw some longitudinal comparisons. Because the, uh, way in which they calculate, uh, low income or low SES has changed over time. But looking at free and reduced lunch, uh, might be something that gives us a little bit of a longitudinal comparison. And, uh, we're currently, uh, have sixteen percent of our students, um, identified as qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Uh, and that number has doubled roughly in the last decade. That percentage has doubled roughly in the last decade. At the same time, I'll just remind you that the overall population has decreased. And, um, students with disabilities, um, we're currently at eighteen point four percent, which is right around the state average. Uh, it is up a little bit from a few years ago, um, but has been stable, uh, in terms of, uh, percentage in, in a couple of years. What I would note about trends there is that we're seeing, um, increased, um, prevalence of increased intensive student needs. When we're talking about students with disabilities. And so you've heard over time, kind of how we've expanded some of our specialized programs. And services accordingly. So given that framework of the Portrait of a Graduate, uh, focusing on all of our students, but also taking a look at trends in our, uh, demographics. We've got, uh, some selected areas of focus for you this evening. Want to talk a little bit about the efforts, uh, that the school committee has taken, uh, your leadership and the leadership of school committees in the past. In terms of, um, setting equitable policies. Uh, we'll talk a bit about some highlights related to professional development. Want to spend some time, uh, in a few key areas related to curriculum and instruction. We'll talk about school culture, uh, in terms of proactive, uh, things that are going on to promote a positive school culture. We'll talk about reactive things, including responding to bias-based incidents and then, uh, district supports. So a couple of highlights related to school committee leadership. Um, in the past, uh, three years or so, there have been a number of school committee resolutions. Uh, adopted that are related to more equitable and inclusive learning experiences. I think the one that maybe, um, maybe resonates the most, um, is a anti-racism resolution. That was adopted in the summer of two thousand and twenty. And I think that, and I say that because this work has been, uh, and I'll share a little bit more on another side. This work has been underway for quite some time. But the events, um, of George Floyd's murder that May and that summer really fomented and accelerated the work. And the school committee adopted the resolution. Later that fall and the slate of resolutions that came forward, uh, the school committee also, um, supported a resolution. Towards equity for sexual orientation, uh, of LGBTQ plus students, teachers and staff. This most recent fall, uh, MASC as a, uh, organization. The resolution committee put forward and the school committee supported a resolution on the ban of Native American mascots. Uh, support on the use of restorative justice practices over zero tolerance policies. And supporting equity, uh, through access to free broadband, um, largely in rural parts, uh, of Massachusetts. A, a resolution pertaining to educator diversity and professional licensure was supported in the fall of nineteen. A resolution, uh, related to the access of menstrual products was also supported at that time. And, uh, resolutions related to universal pre-K and the impact of poverty on children was also supported at that time. Uh, so I think you can see through these resolutions, um, which lead to advocacy. You know, kind of, uh, an overall support both of this committee as well as MASC and other committees in the Commonwealth, uh, towards equity. I can't give the entire history of this work, uh, and there are certainly people on this call who had been in the district prior to my arrival. But my perspective in terms of coming in as superintendent, when I arrived in two thousand and seventeen. Cultural proficiency had been a discreet initiative, uh, under instruction, uh, in the school's, uh, improvement plan. Uh, which was something that had been in place for a couple of years, uh, prior to my arrival. Uh, working with the school committee and the administrative team, we took cultural proficiency and placed it as an overarching goal through which. through which the other goals were viewed rather than a discreet initiative in just one area. And I think in 2020, we really took a closer look and identified some specific initiatives with a DEI lens. Also, I think shaping this from leadership from the top from the school committee are also some policies and some practices that want to make sure everybody is aware of. In recent years, we revised the financial assistance policy to broaden access to financial assistance beyond free and reduced lunch in order to support families who need that. The dress code policy was examined in 2018 to provide for a more inclusive school dress code. Similarly, homework policy was reviewed around that time with a recognition that students don't have the same types of supports for homework. And so wanting to create a policy that created a level playing field around homework. We've revised policies related to educational opportunities for homeless students, students of military families, and children in foster care. And as we go through the policy manual, there is a very deliberate process of making sure that it is being revised for gender neutrality with the changing of pronouns, among other language that may come up. Contracts are being looked at with updated anti-bias language. The word grandfather, for example, I think has a negative history. And so that is something that we're looking for alternatives to, as well as revising contracts for gender neutrality. Based on feedback and input from a parent, we revised our enrollment forms to be inclusive of all families. They now say parent one, parent two, or parent, I should say, parent guardian one, parent guardian two, in recognition that families who can be comprised of all sorts of adults supporting children. We have facilitated access to interpreters for visitors to our school offices. And our new online enrollment, which was a product of the pandemic, expands access in multiple languages. This is a brief chance for me to catch my breath and show a picture. But this is the entryway of our office where we have a display, your right to an interpreter and just make it easy for folks to come in and enroll children. I think it'd be really hard to cover all of the professional development that's going on in the district. But we are working towards professional development in a multitude of ways. And we'll highlight several examples for you. Similar to how I started with the Kalise Warnum Foundation of a Culturally Proficient District. Kalise also talks about indicators of a culturally proficient teacher. Culturally proficient teacher self-reflex and asks, what are my cultural values? How do my values shape the way I teach, evaluate, and understand others? She suggests that we study our students and our staff, learning who they are, how do their cultural values shape their learning, showing that we value their culture and creating entry points for their culture. Having an ability and willingness to have difficult conversations, asking curious questions, and believing their reality. And articulating and living the vision. Our faculty are the vision in motion, embodying articulated, the articulated culturally proficient vision of the district and practice and develop the rules and traditions that encourage cultural proficiency. So this was again, shared at the beginning of 2020 with our faculty and staff. And I love going to buildings and hearing stories about ways in which they are seeking to know their students and learn more about them. In addition to having some PD with Dr. Warnum, we have had professional development locally facilitated in the district by a couple of different people from Learning for Justice. They have a program called Speak Up at School. We have held sessions for all district faculty and staff. We have held sessions at New Teacher Orientation. And there is some follow-up being done in faculties, at top faculty, smaller groups, individual faculties, for example. Speak Up at School is a way to interrupt microaggressions and some language around that. We have had, and you'll hear more tonight, about our work with LGBTQ plus Safe Schools, which is a program through DESI, as well as Children's Friend, that has worked with some of our elementary faculty and staff, where a student, to support a student, the family, all children, and the faculty and staff with a student transitioning their gender. And counselors have attended webinars on nondiscrimination on the basis of gender identity. We have an effort to incorporate DEI into curriculum units. And so that is part of professional development. We've engaged Student Voice in some of our professional development to listen from our students. And you'll hear a little bit more about the High School Resource Group tonight. And many of our faculty and staff at the building level have been through formal, trauma-informed care training. And this is just a graphic to kind of anchor the Speak Up at School and giving teachers language around interrupting the microaggression, questioning it, educating around it, or echoing what another upstander might say. And that's a framework that we have been practicing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to a few folks to talk a little bit more specifically about curriculum and instruction. And I think we have a nice quote that, I don't know if Ms. Clam or Dr. Ashley picked it, but we have a quote to anchor this.
Dr. Ashley picked it, but she asked me to read it. "Literature transforms human experience and reflects it back to us. And in that reflection, we can see our own lives and experiences as part of the larger human experience." And there are some examples of literature here for you tonight just to show a little bit about what we're talking about, about that larger human experience. One focus for a very long time now in all of our schools is expanding the collections in our classrooms, our classroom libraries, and in our school libraries. There's an expression that's being used a lot in education to provide children with windows, mirrors, and doors. And so we're talking about giving them opportunities to look through the windows and peek in on those who are living lives that are different from theirs in a lot of different ways. Providing the mirrors to see themselves reflected back in the literature that they're experiencing, and then also experiencing doors into other cultures, other religions, other family structures, other types of homes that they might not be as familiar with. And really looking for books that provide an authentic voice. So for example, one thing that you're seeing a lot of right now in children's publishing is Native American authors telling their stories. You know, Fry Bread is an example of that that I brought with me tonight. And so we're seeing a lot of that. We're seeing a lot of books reflecting a lot of different individuals with disabilities. And so I always say that you can, you know, anything you need to talk about with a child, you can find it in a book, and that's really true. You know, we're talking, we talk a lot about food insecurity. Jefferson and all of our schools do food drives with the Franklin Food Pantry. There's books about soup kitchens. You know, there's books, as I said, about different disabilities. So we have a book like Just Ask that features character, a different character on every page, telling about the challenge that they might face, whether that's with diabetes, asthma, dyslexia, being in a wheelchair. A lot of students might not, they might know someone with asthma, but they might not know that much about it. So this book provides a window to learn a little bit more about that. And just in general, we're seeing books that are telling stories that feature characters that represent a much more global view. So a book like All Are Welcome, which is a great story for building community in your classroom and features so many different characters, characters in wheelchairs and characters coming from all different places. So that's the type of thing that we have been looking for for a long time to increase our classroom libraries and continue to do so. And that's just an example for the elementary ECDC, but it's going on at our middle schools and high schools as well.
So next up, Dr. Ashley is going to talk a bit about some of our work related to challenging texts and PD.
Thank you, Dr. Hearn, and thank you, Ms. Clam. Emily is Sarah, an outstanding principal, but she also has that outstanding literacy background that we truly value so much on our administrative team. So this year, our grade eight teachers participated in professional development through Primary Source, which is a wonderful professional development provider that many surrounding districts rely on. We focused on helping teachers facilitate discussions about challenging topics, such as inequality, prejudice, and oppression. We really wanted the teachers to feel supported in meeting the curriculum demands at the eighth grade level. And they really appreciated that time to collaborate, to get together, and to have some guidance from an outside source who hasn't had a lot of expertise in this area. So one of the things the eighth grade teachers really talked a lot about was creating a safe and respectful classroom community to really facilitate meaningful engagement. So really creating that safe, that safe community has to come first before you can read literature, understand literature, and really look at things, look at things from a variety of perspectives and really teaching the, teaching the students and having them practice how to have respectful and appropriate dialogue and really listening to each other's voices and differing opinions. We talked about creating ground rules as a class to support these honest discussions and a safe place to share perspectives. So before literature would get taught, and really at the beginning of the year is really to set up that classroom, that classroom community. And then we talked about some ideas for how teachers can kind of bring out the discussion in the kids that might be quiet or might have opinions, but be a little bit reluctant at that eighth grade level to talk about what they're feeling and thinking. So we talked a lot about using reflective questions, encouraging writing or journaling. You know, you don't have to say it out loud, but you can still participate and communicate with your teacher about your thoughts and feelings in writing. So I think teachers, we have, still have a lot of work to do, but the teachers did appreciate this as a start. We do send letters to parents and guardians of students reading books that include mature themes or our language so that parents can process texts with students at home as well as under the guidance of their trained teachers at school. So we send home letters when we're reading books such as The Blue Eye or To Kill a Mockingbird that do have mature themes, language, and some challenging, challenging topics. So some people wonder, why do we use texts and difficult material in our classrooms? But it's important for our students to encounter different contexts so they have the opportunity to understand other human experiences. We know that literature really leads to deep and meaningful conversations, topics such as racism, gender roles, growing up, having empathy, and identity. So as we said, the teachers, teachers, they take, you know, talking about literature very seriously, they guide groups. Students aren't just given a book and saying, go read, and we'll talk about it later. They really guide, guide the literature discussions in that, in that whole group to really support students' understanding and thinking and discussions. And then we encourage parents to, even if they can't read along with the text as the students are reading, that they get, they can support their students at home and processing material if they have any questions.
Great. We're joined tonight by Kristin Letender-Smith, who is our Director of Health and Wellness. And this department has been doing quite a bit of work related to their health and wellness curriculum for a couple of years now. And Kristin's going to share more with you.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you to the Franklin School Committee for inviting me in tonight to share what we've been working on. Approximately five years ago, we did a major curriculum review in our K-12 discipline. And as Sarah mentioned, we've been doing a lot of listening and learning throughout that time. I also belong to the Cities and Towns Administrators Health and Physical Education Directors Group, in which I learn a lot and see what's going on in other towns in Massachusetts related to our discipline. So we've made a lot of curriculum revisions based on feedback that we've gotten from students, from families, and from best practices in the field, from other experts. Our staff participated, as Sarah mentioned before, in the DESI Safe Schools Training in 2017 along with our guidance and adjustment counseling staff. And since then, we've really been trying to use gender-inclusive language in all of the lessons that we teach. The biggest change within our curriculum has been gender-inclusive human growth and development lessons, which we implemented in 2019. And that falls within grades four through 10 within our district. And the focus really has a, is medical and looking at the science and biology behind all the body changes that we all go through. We know that we all change throughout the life cycle, and that's normal with our hormones and physical characteristics and all of those things. And it's nothing to be ashamed of. So we also try to normalize those changes with, in our classrooms and within our curriculum. So we know that students don't feel alone. And some of those changes are social changes, emotional changes, in addition to the physical changes that they may experience through puberty. And this is also the type of education that has been linked to a reduction in gender-based violence in some global studies. It's also nice to see that our work has been supported by the Mass Senate Bill from 2020 with the use of gender-inclusive language and gender education and consent within our lessons. We've included multicultural products in our hygiene lessons at the elementary school. We've started to use racially diverse CPR mannequins at the high school when we teach CPR and have included inclusive classroom posters across our K-12 classrooms. We've also developed new lessons on consent and revisions to other lessons that we had related to healthy relationships and respect and bullying within our K-12 curriculum. And within the physical education classroom, we focused on sports and games from around the world, including those related to the Olympics, Paralympics, Special Olympics, and have started to teach more of the history behind some of the units that we teach, including that tennis originated in France. Chukball is a form of handball that originated in Switzerland. Soccer in the World Cup was created in China, among other sports created in the United States. So we try to globalize what our students are learning.
Thank you, Kristin. Dr. Ashley's going to talk a little bit about the approach in social studies.
So in 2018, they're not new anymore, but it feels like they're new due to the pandemic. But in 2018, the new History and Social Studies frameworks came out from DESI. And so we're aligned to these standards. And our teachers not only use the standards as far as the curriculum, the scope and sequence, but there's also some really important guiding principles in the frameworks that we talk about, talk about often. So related to diversity, equity, inclusion, the guiding principles really incorporate diverse perspectives and tell the histories of individuals and groups, which is a really important part of teaching history and social studies. The frameworks and the curriculum really honor life stories while acknowledging our own ongoing struggle to achieve a more perfect union. So really looking at honoring history, but we're looking to see the perspectives and how students can relate it to their own lives and to the future. Some examples of the frameworks is in first grade. Students learn about the ways in which people in the United States are both unified and diverse, and how people from different parts of the world have different customs. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. But really celebrating lots of different holidays and lots of different, lots of different cultures is really important to the elementary experience. In grade five, for example, students learn about slavery in the early United States and how enslaved people sought their freedom. And then they learn up into the Civil Rights Movement and how the Civil Rights Movement challenged the oppression of African Americans. And then moving up to middle school and high school, teachers include discussions of current events. And they really ground their discussion. and they really ground their discussions and teaching through historical, geographical, social, and economic contexts, really weaving all those together as you can see the progression of how students can understand different perspectives and different contexts as they mature. Our civics project are really coming along. In 2018, Governor Baker signed an act to promote and enhance civic engagement, which included student-led civics projects. So our civics projects are done in eighth grade, and then some of them are continued or students start new ones in high school. But these projects are a really important part of the curriculum. They're designed to promote a student's ability to analyze complex issues, consider different points of view, make logical arguments and support claims using valid evidence, engage in civil discourse with those who hold opposing positions. So you see the really important theme of understanding perspectives and really learning how to engage in discussions with people with different perspectives. And also to demonstrate an understanding of the connections between federal, state, and local politics and policies, including issues that may impact the student's school or community. Very important part of this, though, which sometimes we really have to talk a lot about with teachers, and we are constantly getting guidance from the Department of Ed. And there's lots of seminars and workshops to help guide the civics project. It's really important that they're goal-driven, they're inquiry-based, they're nonpartisan, which is really important. So we're a project where not, for example, have students working on the electoral process or supporting a candidate. They might support a position or something that they're interested in, but it is supposed to be nonpartisan, which we support our teachers and helping them navigate that. And of course, the real world, and really the projects are student-led. So we give kids a variety of, not really options, but ideas. And then they just take it, and they can run with it with their guidance of their teachers. Some of the eighth-grade projects, two of the eighth-grade projects, I just wanted to highlight. There's so many, but one project that some of the teachers told me about was to a couple of students either work in groups or small groups, pairs, individual. I think this was a pair project. They worked on racism awareness. And their goal was to bring awareness to the problem of racism and the effects it has on different people. The students sold bracelets and donated $200 to the NAACP. And that was their project. So it's a project, and it also, some of them have an outcome. Another project was students were raising awareness about the issues and stigma of teen suicide and the LGBTQIA+ community. The students, really, their goal was really to reduce stigmas and to let kids know that they're not alone, the struggles they're facing in their daily life. They made posters to post around the school with resources for students to access if they were struggling. They also reached out to a local, to one of the lawmakers about more mental health resources to really advocate for that. So as you can see, the projects are quite near and dear to their, to things that they're really concerned about. For history, right now, we are in the process at the high school of selecting high-quality United States history and world history textbooks. Our textbooks are aging, and the social studies department is working hard during department meeting time. And we're reaching out to a variety of publishers right now. And we are using a rubric from the Department of Ed to really make sure that the resources are high-quality and for purposes of tonight, to really make sure, we'll talk a little bit more in another slide, but to really use a framework of diversity, equity, inclusion to make sure we're looking, to make sure that the books and the texts and the resources are culturally proficient. When we are planning our presentation tonight, Principal Hannah, I mentioned a new class at the high school, which is called Race in American Society. And this course strives to promote an acceptance and respect for all peoples at Franklin High School in Franklin and in the United States and around the world. And students, it's a semester course, and it's grounded in history in order for students to learn an understanding of the legacy of race in the United States. So the course is through the social studies department, so it really is grounded in history. And students in this course, they also do a project, and they learn about multiculturalism. And they do a community service project. It could be an ad campaign. They could attend lectures. They can read literature, view documentaries. They can visit museums. So it's really about expanding students' awareness and experience in multiculturalism through student-led and ways that would be meaningful to them.
Thank you, Dr. Ashley. So one of the things that I want to highlight as it relates to the curriculum is the SEAL of Bili literacy, which was put into place a couple of years ago. I think last year, we graduated our first graduates with the SEAL in the class of 2021. It's a credential students may add to their high school transcript. It's endorsed by the Department of Education. So there's a formal process you have to go through in order to be a district that's allowed to award it. And this credential can be added to the transcript by a student demonstrating proficiency in English and a second language. So there are students for whom their first language is English, and they might earn the credential by taking a world language class, like French or Spanish, if they achieve a high enough proficiency level. It's also an opportunity to highlight the skills of English learners, who I think are so often thought of as limited or less than because they are acquiring English as a second language. But to me, this is really a celebration. I cannot speak two languages, and I would aspire to, I suppose. But it is really a celebration for our students who graduate biliterate in their home language and then also in English. Last year, like I said, we had our first graduates. There were four, and two of those students were English learners. And kudos to Dawn Marie Fernandez at the high school and Laura Evans for putting that program together.
On January 11th, Dr. Ellen White and Jen Gravon and I had the opportunity to share with you our continuing services that we offer here in Franklin in much detail. So I will not go into detail this evening. But those services for students with disabilities could include accommodations for students by the Gen Ed teacher, inclusion support, support in the Gen Ed classroom, rephrasing that, support in the Gen Ed classroom by our paraprofessionals, related service providers, special educators, to some pull-out services, and then to our specialized programs, and then to out-of-district if they needed. And all these services are always based on student need, the individual's student need. And of course, we always strive to, and we are obligated, to provide these services in the least restricted environment, which includes the general education classroom. Kathy Giardina describes it the best, and I just want to read her quote, is, "Effective inclusion is about names and the uniqueness of every child, and not just the numbers or the test scores. It's about what the student needs and not the disability label often attached to the individual student. And effective inclusion is about the services provided rather than the places where those services are offered." And this is really what we strive for as educators and really keep that in mind as we're developing a student's educational, individualized educational plan. And you know, inclusion support and inclusive classrooms are beneficial to everyone, not just students with disabilities. They're beneficial to the staff and the students that are all around the students with disabilities. It really helps our students and staff really appreciate each individual's different cognitive processes and neurodiversity and really just better understand that, you know, students learn in different, people learn in different ways. There's no one way, excuse me, no one right way for thinking, learning, and behaving. And then all of these differences are not deficits. They're just differences. And we just really need to really appreciate each one of our differences and respect them.
Also related to curriculum and instruction, and something that I want to point out that I think is unique to Franklin Public Schools, it certainly has not existed in communities where I've worked previously. And that is the incredible support from our parent communication councils. They are, we had a meeting this evening, and I made sure to take a moment and note that they would be brought up as part of this presentation. Through their generous volunteerism and funding, they are providing enrichment and curriculum-based field trips. And I think what's really important is that this levels a playing field for families in terms of students being able to have access to enrichment and field trips. In other districts, field trips are often funded by individual families. And even though there may be financial support elsewhere, it's still a burden and a worry for families in order to afford those field trip expenses. And so curriculum-based field trips are funded by the PCCs. Now, granted, there's volunteerism and fundraising behind all of that, but I think it's important to note those efforts. Core school supplies are provided by the district, and we participate with and are appreciative of the YMCA for the summer backpack program, where there's dozens of backpacks going out to students in the district before the start of school year.
Dr. Hearn, can I piggyback on that comment around the YMCA? Mrs. Marana and I have a meeting set up for after February vacation. Our local YMCA is planning to expand their services for our community. We don't have all the detail now, but we'll certainly share that. But it's nice to hear that they're listening and learning and trying to see, looking for ways in which they can continue to support our community. So just to add, it wasn't really game time ready for the presentation, but certainly as that evolves and we have more info, we'll be sure to push that out.
And lastly, this last slide in the curriculum and instruction area is something that's being worked on by the Subcommittee of the DEI Committee. Linda can talk a little bit more about it.
It's such a wonderful committee, and we are really looking, which is very timely because we're starting to, as I talked about in a previous slide, we're really looking at history, history, text, and resources at the high school. So it was a really timely work with the committee. So we're really, we are researching lots of different rubrics and checklists to make sure that when we are looking and evaluating materials, that we're really looking very carefully for the culturally responsive lens as well as all the content and the content and resources. So we're really looking for social studies, history materials that present a diverse range of stories and experiences. We really want our students to apply a critical lens to the past. We're looking for materials that support students in connecting their learning to their own identity and experiences. So really making sure that there's writing opportunities, rooting opportunities, and primary sources from a range of materials and also a great range of ways for students to output their knowledge and learning. And we also are looking for materials that provide diverse perspectives, voices, and narratives, and also to encourage honest and informed discussions about power, prejudice, and oppression, which is important as we're looking for materials. And we'll use these rubrics for other subject areas as well. But right now, it's timely because we're looking at social studies.
Okay, so talking about school culture. So school culture is a big part of creating that safe and inclusive space, and Lucas is going to touch upon those various ways.
So just two quick things. One, I'm reminded, the next three slides are references to either core values, mission statements, and visions. And I'm going to hearken back to my days as a young Marine. And I can remember a drill instructor talking about your core values are only as good as they're lived and anchor kind of the decisions you make. I think that would apply to a lot of different places, but the military certainly anchors their work around having a set of values that everyone can understand and can try to replicate and make decisions based on them. So when we put these up on the screen, I'm also reminded of, as a principal, during the ASK, you're required to really revisit, look at your core values, get stakeholder input, and put together a set of values that you, as a community, are willing to commit to. So when we think about that, the process that we've gone through with some of this work is really important. And I think it's demonstrated here with some of these examples. I'd also say that DEI, although we've always, as a school community, it's just inherent in what we do to want to be inclusive. And I feel like it's just, we've always shared an interest in really trying to foster inclusion, DEI, in that work. But I think it has a renewed meaning as our students become more and more diverse. So we're really dedicated to that work. So here's just a few examples from the elementary. Wrong computer. Okay. Here are some examples we pulled from sections. I didn't put the whole document because I really wanted to highlight where we see words that talk about having respect for differences, right? Respect for individual differences, cultures, kindness. And I think you see the ECDC wording at the bottom, celebrate our diversity. And also you'll see examples of that at the high school as well and really trying to build that idea around school culture. So like I said, these are values. And I hope that you've heard some concrete examples of where these shine through, and you'll continue to throughout the rest of the presentation.
So just some examples from the elementary level of ways that we build school culture. All of our classroom teachers and many of our special educators and specialists are trained in responsive classrooms. So through morning meetings, closing circles, and throughout the day, we're striving to build that classroom community, give students authentic times to share and ask questions, and really get to know each other and to build that safe, welcoming environment for everyone. I believe all of our elementary schools have all-school meetings on a monthly basis where we will, you know, do any number of things related really to our core values. So some, they, you know, structure it a little bit differently depending on the school and the community. But some examples that I can give you from Jefferson from the last several years, one of our core values is inclusive. So we have had all-school meetings where we've shared information with students on topics such as dyslexia and autism. We have had, we have core values around safe and respectful. So we've done all-school meetings around the importance of our names and using someone's, you know, preferred name or nickname, pronouncing their name correctly and how it's a part of your identity. And then, you know, getting at safe, you know, how we act on the bus, expected versus unexpected behaviors, you know, and throughout our school day, on the playground, in our hallways, that type of a thing. And also, you know, taking a look at what's on the walls of our classrooms and our hallways and all of that. So Bren Vaticlan, a mural artist who's been at many of our Franklin schools over the years, was just back at Jefferson for, I think this was the fifth time, and just painted an outstanding mural in the music room with input from all of our students during their art classes during his week of being an artist in residence. And we specifically worked to include musical instruments from all different cultures around the world. He just painted that Parmesan as well. So those types of things are, you know, what we're looking at again so that students see themselves reflected, but also, you know, are learning.
Hello, I'm Craig Williams, the principal of Remington, and thank you for having me. I'm very excited to speak about what's happening in the middle level to build a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion. All three middle schools are committed to the work of the World of Difference peer leaders. This was a group initiated in 2017, 2018. But this year has allowed a real recommitment to training a group of around 20 students per school about bias and how they can address that and microaggressions that occur in our schools and community. The training is facilitated by representatives from ADL over a span of three days. In fact, we have two in-person trainings coming up where all three middle schools are going to be at the Horseman Auditorium, receiving this training together. And then those peer leaders, over the next few months, will teach lessons to our sixth graders and provide resources for our schools to utilize.
All right. Craig, thanks so much, and good evening to the Franklin School Committee and community at large. In addition to the great work that's gone on at our elementary and middle schools, the high school is continuing to find ways to connect with our students, making sure that the diverse backgrounds that we see in front of us every day are honored with the commitment that we have to updating our curriculum, creating opportunities for folks to see themselves and others in our daily interactions. We know that that is the best way to allow for students to reach their optimal potential. And our daily interactions, we know um, that that is the best way to allow for students to reach their optimal potential is to feel connected. And so that's where we're putting our uh, energy. And it's part of our school improvement goal to make sure that we're seeing those uh, moments in all of our lessons, uh, in our units. And um, I was in a math class earlier this week where one of our teachers. Uh, was using geometric shapes and, and the idea of triangles and looking at food resources within certain uh, communities. Uh, in New England and depending upon their socioeconomic status, how uh, many opportunities that they have for. Uh, more healthier foods versus uh, maybe some fast food or convenience store type food. So. We're not just seeing in the humanities, we're seeing it in our STEM classes as well, but we know that that's not just the answer. We also recognize that. We need to create resource. Groups and opportunities in this past uh, late fall, early winter into the new year. We uh, teamed up with Akil Montesir, who works as a diversity, equity, inclusion specialist in the Bedford Public Schools. It brought him in on a number of occasions on Wednesday afternoons to create some opportunity for small groups. Of folks who uh, have either identified uh, within our clubs or within our school as not feeling as connected. Uh, with the community as we would hope and really working to get some of our stories uh, out. In, into the floor and into the um, voices and, and ears and understandings within our school. Um, and we're gonna be bringing I can statements for members of these resource groups to a faculty meeting in March. Where our faculty can hear some of the reality because it's as um, dedicated as we are to the work. And as much improvement as we've seen, not just here in Franklin, but across the state in the last five or so years, we know there's still work to be done. And we need to hear these stories so we can uh, allow for it to motivate us for the work in front of us.
And in, in seeing the success of the resource group at the high school level. Uh, the middle level is exploring ways we can translate that success. Um, and that type of a program in a developmentally appropriate way for, for our middle schoolers.
I think we're moving to the next slide. I'm having trouble, uh, not sure what the school committee is being here, but we'll go with it. School culture wise, we're on, okay Craig, I think you're going with best buddies, is that right?
Yes, I, I got that. So um, all levels are, are aiming to include a variety of club and extracurricular offerings. Uh, that will promote uh, inclusion. They include best buddies, uh, spectrums and saga, which promotes positive awareness of our LGBTQIA. Plus uh, community, uh, the diversity awareness club, um, at uh, at the high school as well as girl love. So plenty of opportunities if students want to bring this um, after school, uh, these passions uh, to help promote. Um, and make sure that everyone feels a, a sense of belonging, a home uh, at the schools in Franklin.
Yeah, I agree Craig, and, and I think fo- folks that, you know, experience a week at the high school recognize that no matter where your interests are. There's opportunity for you to explore your passion, uh, and the clubs there on the list are, are fine examples of that. But I would have, I think, you know, bulging out unified sports. As arguably the most inclusive organization to hit Massachusetts in the last twenty years. It is an absolute highlight of our school, uh, our entire school system. And certainly for Franklin High School, it's a point of tremendous pride. Uh, more recently, we were honored by being welcomed to the Unified Games. Uh, down in Florida, and I know that there was uh, support by the school committee, which we thank you for that because. Uh, as we look at how to create an equitable, inclusive community, there's no better way. Than to say we have evidence of it than to see it in action and the work that our uh, athletes and coaches. Uh, within our unified sports programs, uh, connect with each other and the sincere joy. Uh, and, and collective support is absolutely second to none. Uh, any administrator who's been a part of it, uh, recognizes that this is a real piece of um. Evidence to support the hard work that goes into this type of focus. So thank you to all of the coaches and adults to help support. The special shout out to our athletic director, Mr. Tom Angelo, who I know played a gigantic role in beginning the unified sports. Uh, here within the Franklin Public Schools.
And, and in addition to that, um, Lisa Berger, who's one of the coaches, is working very hard to get this up and moving uh, at the middle level. Um, so we're, we're very excited for that opportunity, just knowing um, the power that it can have.
Uh, this next slide, we won't need, we won't necessarily watch the entire video, but for the uh, school committee members who haven't tuned in to the Panther News lately. Uh, this particular um, creation was helping us kick off our Franklin High School No Place For Hate campaign. Uh, where we've connected with the Anti-Defamation League to really call out some opportunities for us as a community. To say we've seen examples of things that aren't okay, we've seen examples of hate speech, harassment, bullying, et cetera. And uh, sadly, in particular, in the last uh, coming out of the pandemic. Uh, we've noticed a opportunity for us to um, realize some of our behaviors. Um, that maybe we weren't getting redirected enough during the pandemic, we're, we're being seen and heard and that's not okay. Um, and as a school, we committed to working with the Anti-Defamation League to come up with a kind of overall outline. To help support some of the work. And so uh, we kicked the campaign off the days following Martin Luther King uh, weekend. Where we really felt as though his uh, memory was a great way to surround this idea of creating equality for all. And making sure that not only do we believe in that, but we act in it. And we collected over twelve hundred signatures just in the hallway, uh, without any coercion. That was one of the most important parts. Of this program was to really create this opportunity for students to show their want to connect. And some of the school committee members were gracious enough to, to join and see. And it's, it just like any movement, it started slow and, and as the week wore on and their understanding of the program wore on, it gained more and more support. Uh, it allowed for us to organize around uh, now making opportunities in March, April and May, three different schoolwide opportunities. To show our uh, commitment to making Franklin High School uh, a no place for hate, which I think we all agree with. Uh, and now it's an opportunity for us to showcase that, particularly for groups that maybe um. Have seen, heard or felt uh, not as supported as, as we have as our standard is. As Mr. Jagir was mentioning, your core values are only as strong as the way in which you live them. And uh, we have had examples where we were not living up to them and that's not okay. And this campaign is gonna help us call that out and move forward. And we have uh, plans for uh, incorporating an advisory program. Back into the high school schedule for next year, where we could continue to follow up on these points and these missions uh, on a more consistent basis.
Hi everyone, we've got a special show for you today, but first here are a few school announcements. The Red Cross Club is hosting movie night next Friday in the cafeteria from seven to nine.
And you may have seen it. Linda and I, um, from central office have been um. Promoting in the schools, uh, an awareness related to holidays as well as months of recognition using a calendar published by the Anti-Defamation League. Linda may want to add a little bit more about that.
So um, we have been um, really trying to look at um, making sure we're more inclusive of holidays. But also making sure that we don't just um, think about um, Black History Month in the month of February or. Um, it really important to embed um, our, our teaching and learnings throughout uh, throughout the, our curriculum and throughout the year. Um, but principals and teachers do a great job of highlighting um, different holidays, different cultural events. Um, through a variety of um, celebrations. It's also, um, we've realized it's really important to ask our students and we have some students on our, on the DEI committee. Um, which is wonderful and, and they, uh, one of the, uh, one of the students reminded us during uh, one of our meetings that. It's really important to kind of ask, ask the students, ask the families, you know, how, how do you celebrate the culture? What are some books? Um, what are some books that would be good to read and truly ask and learn? Um, and learn together if it's, if it's a different, if it's a culture that we might not know um, that much about. So I think that's um. That was a really important a bit of advice from uh, from one of our high school students. And she said, you know, that book really isn't that great. Uh, about our culture. How about this book? Um, so I think we all have lots of learning to do um, together, but. Um, some of the things that are in the elementary schools, they're doing like Fun Fact Fridays, where they'll talk about Veterans Day, um, Hispanic Heritage Month. Month or um, other celebrations. Um, principals, you talk about things in the newsletters, bulletin boards from around. Uh, around the school. So really trying to be um, a much more inclusive uh, of our awareness of, of recognition.
Just an example of a bulletin board. For viewing later, you can watch a student um, production related to uh, Juneteenth. And a, a little bit more about school culture is gathering data about how the students are feeling in the culture. So Kristen's gonna start us off with the Metro West. Youth, Metro West Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Thank you. So as many of you are aware, we participate in the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. Um, every other year Franklin joined the initiative in two thousand six and we've had, we have longitudinal data. From two thousand six up through almost today. Um, our most recent data is from two thousand eighteen, which is pre-pandemic. So we're at a little bit of a loss. Um, coming here to present to you today because we don't have the data from twenty twenty one. Um, we should have surveyed students in grade seven through um, twelve in twenty twenty, but due to the pandemic, they bumped it back a, a year. So we surveyed students at the middle and high school level in October and November of twenty twenty one. So we're still waiting for our data. Um, but I do want to share with you the most recent data from twenty um, eighteen with you tonight. Um, so the survey asked students questions about verbal harassment and um. Students can identify themselves by race, ethnicity, culture, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, height, weight and how they look. More students report bullying due to their height and weight, uh, more than any other group within our schools. Um, in twenty sixteen, this is when a lot of this data started to be collected. But next, the next group would um, be students identifying verbal harassment and bullying due to their race, ethnicity or culture. At both the high school and middle school level. Um, so people who identified themselves as females at the middle school level. Um, thirty-two percent of them said that they have been bullied due to height and weight or how they look. Whereas twenty-seven percent of males um. Have said they've been bullied for the same reason and ten percent of all students um, said at the middle level said they've been bullied. Due to their race, ethnicity or culture. Um, at the high school level, people who identified themselves as female, thirty percent of them said that they had been bullied due to their height, weight or how they look. Twenty-five percent of those students who identified as male, um, said that they had been bullied for the same reasons. Eight percent of all high school students said that they had been bullied due to their race, ethnicity and or culture. And um, more students in ninth grade, thirty-six percent. Um, and it starts to decrease by grade level, so thirty percent, twenty-five, um, so sorry, thirty percent and in tenth grade. Twenty-five percent in eleventh grade and eighteen percent in twelfth grade said that they had been bullied um, due to their height. Um, weight or how they look. So I just wanted to give you the breakdown by grade level. So it did seem to go down. Um, in terms of percentage, but still these are um, quite shocking numbers. The survey also asks questions related to stress. And people who identified as female, um, responded to the question, how often do you worry or feel stressed about your appearance? At the high school level, forty-seven percent of those identifying as female said that they um, feel stressed for those reasons. Fifteen percent of those identifying as males said that they felt stressed. At the middle level, people identifying as females said, said thirty-eight percent of the time they worry. Um, or feel stressed about their appearance and eleven percent of those identifying as male, um, said they were stressed for those reasons. Um, twenty-seven percent of ninth graders, twenty-nine percent of tenth graders, forty percent of eleventh graders. Thirty percent of twelfth graders report worrying or feeling stressed about their appearance. So um, this is just to give you a little. Bit of insight into some of the things that our students are reporting and um. Franklin is one of twenty-eight schools within the Metro West region that participates. Um, and one of our, in twenty twenty-one, approximately forty-one thousand students in the Metro West region participated in the survey. So as I said at the beginning, um, we are looking forward to our twenty twenty-one data.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, I think we're. Kind of behind, so to speak, when I think about not having twenty twenty data and having gone three years. Um, through the pandemic with everything that's gone on. Um, so we are looking forward to the twenty twenty-one data. The survey was taken this fall and so I think we should expect some data later this spring. Uh, we'll also get some comparative data too, um, against other uh, similar uh, communities in the region. Give us a sense of. Franklin versus other communities and uh, Kristen, among others, including our guidance counselors and administrators. Always use the information and make changes uh, into the health and wellness curriculum and into some of the other. In, you know, instructional practices um, in the school uh, to, to address. Not just what you heard, but there would also be other questions about substance use and vaping and, and things of that nature. Um, because the Metro West uh, Youth Risk Behavior surveys every other year typically. Um, we are exploring an additional tool which could be given three, four times a year. Um, I don't know that we would. Uh, but the Panorama Student Survey is an option that we are exploring. Um, we had actually thought about doing it uh, in December. But the uh, I don't, I don't mean to be critical, uh, but um. The questions that Panorama had for us, uh, including feelings of belonging, culture and diversity, um, were excellent. Um, but we are working a little bit more with the company to add some questions related to LGBTQIA plus. Uh, and so once we have a survey that I think reflects um, our broader view of diversity, we'll, um, we'll put something out that can be. Repeated over time uh, to get more timely data um, on how, uh, how our students are. And so part of school culture is also unfortunately responding to bias-based incidents that arise. Um, I think as educators, we are in um, kind of a prime position to use those as uh, important opportunities. Uh, that need to be addressed. And so Lucas is gonna talk a little bit about that.
So there's some statistical data for you, um, looking back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, the number of investigations that took place with the bullying's findings and civil rights findings. Um, as we moved through um, eighteen to nineteen, we saw a decrease. And then I will say the, the pandemic years, we saw a significant decrease, but we don't believe it's consistent with. The data that previously existed. This year, we're, we're about three quarters of the way, actually we're halfway through the year. And we're at sixty, um, investigations have taken place, um, with, with bullying's findings and civil rights violations findings as well. So we're seeing an increase. I think you've heard this um, before around the uptick in, in student behavior. Um, resulting in, in investigations, but certainly it's an area that when we, when we do investigate, there's two, there's two. Lenses we need to apply. Uh, a lens, the specific incident and who was harmed individually, um, who was identified as an aggressor. And what type of training and education that they need. And then we have to also take a step back and say, how does this look across our culture? Uh, in our, in our schools and in our buildings. And I think our administrators, for all of the hats they wear, we've talked about multiple areas in which. We're trying to move this work forward. Um, tonight, we've talked about some of the proactive places, curriculum, instruction. Um, but I will say, uh, this takes a lot of time. Um, a good investigation takes time and it takes a lot of communication. With all parties and uh, to really do the, the work to, to do the fact finding. There's some three, three main areas we'll hit on um, in this particular topic. Policies. So we have policies like um, all the school districts across Massachusetts, really across the country. Um, specifically bullying prevention intervention. We have a bullying policy that's under review with our policy subcommittee currently. Um, to look at updates, we've looked at models. Um, I think that was referenced last meeting with an update from Mr. Callahan. And uh, we'll continue to see that. From there, we have a bullying prevention and intervention plan. The plan really is predicated on having that policy updated. So um, folks can expect a, a revisit to that. I think I would imagine that we would want to share some of those updates more. More broadly and also have a communication strategy for how we get that information out to families around bullying. Um, and that policy and plan. So um, until the policy's established, it doesn't make sense to change the plan until we know that the policy's locked in. We have non-discrimination harassment and sexual harassment policies as well, um, like, like every district in Massachusetts. So with regard to procedures for investigating, there are mechanisms for reporting. Um, we've mentioned this before, but a, a student could. We've mentioned this before, but a student could report it directly to an adult. Who could receive email information, parent could reach out. We also have an online bullying forum. If you go to the Franklin Public Schools website and about us, you'll see a section called bullying, prevention and intervention. And then right there is an anonymous reporting form that folks can fill out. So when those reports come in, when we identify a reported or alleged victim at that moment, we really try to focus on what are the supports, supportive measures or interim supports, depending on the situation. The supportive measures that the student needs in that moment. So that can range and typically it's a personal conversation between an administrator, the family, and the student around what they need to feel safe while an investigation would take place. The second piece is really setting up the interviews and we've been trained, our whole, our whole administrative staff has been trained on investigations, but our attorneys who do those trainings have provided us with a flow chart, which really walks through, you know, what steps we need to take, who needs to be interviewed, and making sure that we've put in places of safety measures in place along the way to try to get to seek the truth and get to the bottom of some of the behaviors that are reported, which include interviews, as you can see there. And then ultimately, when there's a finding or not a finding, depending on the situation, we arrive and communicate out with parties where, where we landed with that investigation. In all cases, there's opportunities to learn, whether you're, whether that's paired with a consequence in some cases based on the behavior. There's always an opportunity to, to get some training and some education. And then as I said, if I was to take a step back, we had, you know, we try to look at situations that maybe happen to individuals, but what's the context that's happening within the school, the classroom, the grade, to make sure that we're, we're really mindful of that. We use a standard template form really to, to guide how these, these take place, the investigations take place to make sure we're covering bases. We're examining what we're learning when we have, you know, a preponderance of evidence or it's determined that it's more than likely to occur. Do we have the information we need to kind of make that determination? System of documentation and tracking. So when a report is finalized, it's shared with our central office and we try, we track and monitor on what types of categories, findings are happening or not finding, or if there's no finding. And then ultimately, safety and support plans are developed in cases where there's a target or a victim to make sure that they feel safe and supported depending on the scenario. And then one piece here on opportunities for healing. Sometimes there are incidents that occur and it's a community that's impacted. So I've talked a little bit about kind of individuals and then looking at a school, but unfortunately there are situations that become more hurtful and kind of extend beyond maybe an individual and really hit a community. And we try to look at where, how are there ways that we can partner with our community organizations, with our schools, band together as districts and levels and whatnot. I think of some of the work with the Franklin Freedom Team, which part of their mission is around trying to support healing within a community. So those are just a couple of examples in that way. And then a note about communication. There are times where information is communicated, but there's also times where there's privacy involved. So we try, just like with anything, we try to be as transparent as possible. But there are situations, just like where, you know, if you're a parent and it's your child who's either a victim or an aggressor, there are certain rights that you have along that, around privacy. But we also try to look at, everyone's trying to, to navigate school as a student. You're trying to navigate every grade and different behaviors arise, but ultimately we work with kids and we're in an industry that has kids. And we owe it to, to our victims to make sure that we, we decrease that over time and try to make them feel safe and create psychologically safe environments across our school. But we also owe it to our aggressors in these situations where they've made an inappropriate behavior to hold them accountable, but also teach them and give them a way to come back into the community and learn from their mistake to try to do that. So those are just some of the focus areas, I'd say. And just a shout out to our administrators. I, I, I don't know if it's really truly understood the day that what it entails and the amount of time our administrators dedicate to try to seek the truth and communicate. And these are not, this particular topic and area is not the fun part of the job when you go into education and you want to work in, in schools. It's certainly an area where it can, it can come with a host of challenges. And communicating with a victim's family or an aggressor's family on two different sides, sometimes of a coin, you really have to do what you believe is right in, in the situation and use the information you have to make a decision. So I just would give a shout out to our administrators who have to manage this, then try to keep a culture together in a school that has a variety of behaviors happening, positive and unfortunately negative. So I think I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thanks, Lucas. And our response protocol has been developed by, I don't know if you, I thought I maybe saw you bring it, responding to incidents of hate and bias, which is from
Teaching
Teaching tolerance, learning for justice.
For justice, thank you. They put out a whole manual and that's where the speak up at school that we've referenced a few times tonight. And you saw the yellow resource. They all, it's included with this as a strategy that you can use within your school, but they provided that work. So.
All right. And, and rounding out, the presentation is just some district supports, whether they're in place or in process to kind of uphold, uphold these efforts that you heard about this evening. We've posted for the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and we anticipate that with a slate of candidates, we can begin interviewing in March. A few of us as a team are participating on the Educator Diversification Professional Learning Community with the Department of Education. There are monthly meetings to develop a comprehensive recruitment and retention strategy along the lines of diversifying our educator workforce. As I had noted, this is very impactful in terms of student learning outcomes and I think it would enrich our entire community. There are about 100 districts participating and there is potential grant funding available to provide supports and incentives in diversifying an educator workforce. One of the things that I think has gone perhaps maybe a little bit unknown or unnoticed in terms of our budget allocations. But I think it's worth mentioning in a kind of comprehensive view on how the district is approaching diversity, equity, and inclusion. But when site-based monies are allocated out to our schools, when we have crafted the school department's budget, Miriam and I have allocated based on free and reduced lunch percentages. And so the funding across to schools does weigh in kind of economic impacts. And we have regularly over the past couple of years had conversations with the DPPCCs around equity and funding to make sure that there's equitable learning experiences across schools at the same level. On the next slide, we are getting an equity audit underway and we should have more information to come out to the community, I would say, within the next week or so. We are working with the Public Consulting Group after an RFP process has been selected to conduct an external review of the district's efforts towards diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think it's really important to have that third-party external view. You know, in terms of all of these things that we're looking to do, we also want to look to be better. They will also take, I think, a scientific look at some of our data from publicly available sites like the Department of Education or some information that we provide to them as, you know, to kind of match the, the learning experiences and learning outcomes with some of our efforts. So it's a both a quantitative and a qualitative review. They will be conducting focus groups to gather that qualitative information. And you can expect this to be done over the next several months with a report in May. Ultimately, the information will be used to prioritize and drive some longer-term goals and to maybe hone in on certain areas of the work as, as higher leverage, depending upon what the data and the trends are showing. This data analysis complements what we already participate in. And so again, things that may be a little hidden and unknown to the general public is that every six years, we participate in a statewide review of tiered focused monitoring, which includes civil rights, English learning, and special education and our compliance as well as outcomes related to special populations. And then I think it's every two years, we, we're currently in the process and it's almost done with the US Department of Education submit data related to civil rights. It includes things like discipline. It includes things like advanced course taking, broken down by subgroups to see if there's any disproportionality in the districts, in the district, in our, in our work. So that is also in the works currently as part of our regular activities. And then of course, I want to be sure to acknowledge our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We meet monthly. We meet tomorrow and we have six subcommittees. We have one subcommittee. Some of what you heard tonight is the ways in which the subcommittees are kind of broken up. But we have one subcommittee working on curriculum and instruction and like you heard, supporting educators and principals on identifying anti-bias or addressing bias within materials. We have a group that's expanding upon staff recruitment and retention, looking at our selection process and interview process and making some recommendations there. We have a professional development group. They recently put out some ideas for principals to use with faculty at faculty meetings. So just kind of teeing up some, some ready resources that have been vetted and, and identified as being consistent with our goals and values that principals can use with their faculty. And one of the things that I will say about this administrative team is that they crave those resources and will put them into place. So that is something that I regularly see within the district. The Policies and Practices Group has been working towards creating a more welcoming school environment, both in person and online as families enroll and have plans to review school handbooks. You can expect to see more there. Our School Culture Group surveyed principals and assistant principals to find out more about what would be helpful to them. And the Communication Group is looking to communicate efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion, particularly from the committee. Similar to the Professional Development Group, the Inclusive Practices Group is looking to provide some supportive resources to get out to principals and assistant principals and faculty as we support students of all neurodiverse types in our classrooms. That should have been deleted. One last slide to talk about. So in sum, I hope we've demonstrated through this, our efforts towards listening, learning, acting, and reflecting. As I know, I don't, I don't think we pretend to have all the answers. I think we are looking to create inclusive, equitable learning spaces for each and every child and doing so together with our community, with humility and a growth mindset. And I also would just add too, I think the last thing that I would want anyone to take away from this is that we are striving to be divisive. And in fact, I think our efforts are looking to pull people together to be one community focused on Franklin's portrait of a graduate and our values. So with that, well, sorry, we've been long-winded. We'd be happy to take questions and comments. Thank you very much, Dr. Hearn. We'll go down the line. Camille, any questions, comments?
I, this isn't really a question because I don't think we could tease out the answer, but I wonder if the increase in bullying incidents is a more comfort in sharing that they happened necessarily that they are happening more often. And I'd like to think that is true, but I also don't want to sugarcoat anything. I'm glad that we're addressing that. But I do think kids are, have, they've gone through the curriculum that we've put in place for years about being an upstander. And so I think they're more likely to report those incidents. I was happy to hear about Primary Source helping teachers facilitate those difficult discussions. Because as a teacher, I can tell you that students learn through practice and teachers need practice too. They aren't always trained in those, facilitating those discussions. They're not always naturally comfortable with them. And it's like sports. I don't really understand why people get it with sports. They get it with an instrument, but difficult conversations are something that people have to practice. It takes a long time to be effective in dialogue and discussion. Mistakes are expected, setbacks too, and some people are just naturally more skilled. We hear a lot, including from some of the citizen comments tonight, that there's a chasm in our society that there's a divide in our country, but very seldom are real solutions put forth. Although I will note that the mother and teacher was the one that proposed some positive actions that we could take. But I do think that if we're ever to bridge that gap, it is having these types of difficult conversations in the classroom. That is the only way, not the only way, it is the best way to help our future and our kids. And the kids are absolutely willing to do it. And it's particularly important if the adults around them are unwilling, unable to discuss difficult topics with appropriate context or information, or to discuss these with respect and empathy. And it may be that they haven't had opportunities or exposure to these subjects before, so they themselves need the practice. And without these opportunities, we are hindering our students as they leave Franklin High School. They're going to go into a world that is not going to be very forgiving of their inability to discuss difficult topics, to be creative, and to respect other people. I think it's important to you and it makes me excited to see all the efforts to increase exposure to the diverse voices and diverse stories. And those of my generation know that a lot of our education of other races or identities was either tokenism or it was seen through, just through oppression. I know that my history, I wasn't too interested in history in high school because it was all treaties and wars. And it wasn't until college that I was like, oh my God, women were doing cool things all during those 400, 500 years, thousands of years. Whether it's in the books that students read or the history they learn or the faculty and staff that they see in front of them or the opportunities that they have to interact with different people. It's important that they see diversity precisely so they can see the universality of humans' experiences and that they can be connected to other humans. That's actually the secret. The more you learn about somebody's differences, the more you see the commonalities that they have with you, a human being. So I'd actually like to share one of my favorite quotes, if I could. It's one that I came across in high school and it helped explain for me why I love to read. I actually have a tattoo that says read. It's much less crisp than it was 20 years ago, but kids can still read it. I'm a product of a challenging childhood that nevertheless was filled with privilege. But books helped me escape and they also gave me a different perspective and different options into my future. So this quote is from James Baldwin, activist and writer. "You think your pain and your heartbreak are unprecedented in the history of the world, but then you read. It was books that taught me that the things that tormented me most were the very things that connected me with all the people who were alive, who had ever been alive." Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Callahan?
Absolutely. Want to begin thanking everybody, Ms. Clem, Ms. Lieutenant Smith, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hannah, Dr. Ashley, the entire central office staff for putting together this incredibly robust presentation. Each, each session that we have, I'm always amazed and impressed at what is kind of being done within our district and incredibly proud to be able to live here, to spend my tax dollars here, to send my, my kids to these schools. The work that you're doing is tremendous and amazing and I know not easy, but thank you so much for our teachers, for our administrators, for everybody involved for doing this work. And a few kind of comments as well. One, I, I love that the portrait of a graduate is a thread throughout this presentation, throughout so many other presentations that we have, that it's always something that, that we, that we live to, that we, that we work and strive for. At one point too, there was a quote that, that we tried to globalize what students are learning. And I absolutely love that to really could be able to, to teach the lessons, but also there was, the specific slide was done in the, in terms of like PE activities, but that, you know, all this, this information that the students are learning isn't just, you know, being isn't just, you know, being taught within a vacuum, but there's so much context that's behind it. We had just a few sessions ago, one of our pledge students, she, during the introduction, talked about how she is now doing archery. And that she got introduced to archery because in, in PE class, they were doing archery, and they were combining it with, you know, like learning about The Hunger Game, or reading about The Hunger Games. And it was, it was fantastic. And it was that stickiness that really kind of then, you know, made her jump to that next level to say, I, I love this and I want to be able to pursue this. And it's fantastic to, to see that. And I loved that line, like globalizing what students are learning. I also want to comment too about the civics project. That is, it was fantastic to hear about. One of the huge duties that, that we have is to make sure that all of our students are well-educated and engaged citizens by the time that they are graduating. And we're clearly striving to do what we can to that end when it comes to the civics projects. If there's anything too for those students that are, that are embarking or that are doing it in the future, if, if, you know, we can help at the school committee level, if you want to present any of your, your projects to us, you know, at our meeting, presenting to a larger audience. And I'd be in favor of it. I wouldn't speak for the entire committee, but please reach out to us. And lastly too, I wanted to hit on what Ms. Clem had introduced, talking about the windows and the mirrors. And it is so valuable. And so I'm so glad to hear that we're continuing to kind of push that within all of our libraries, you know, K to 12, because it is so valuable for, both for students to be able to, you know, see themselves in the books that they read, even, you know, in the superhero movies that they watch. It gives that sense of empowerment. But the, in the windows concept too, seems more and more important that, that all of us, and, and, you know, children included, have a wider access to the world around them and a better understanding that, that their world isn't the only world, that they live in a much larger universe. And to be able to introduce books that do exactly that is, is a wonderful, wonderful jumping off platform. So I'm so thrilled that we're continuing to pursue that as well. So really, thank you so much for all the work that everyone's doing. It's fantastic.
Al?
Yep. So first and foremost, thank you. Appreciate this presentation. I know it took us maybe a little over an hour, but I can't imagine how many hours it took everybody to prepare, put this together. It just shows your dedication, your passion around this, and your, your really commitment to D and I. The things that, that jumped out at me that I wanted just to commend you all for is just really taking the approach of you don't know what you don't know and really having that open mindset that if something does come up, you are flexible and you are changing and you are accommodating with, for the needs of our students. I think that's the most important thing. It sets the right behaviors for our students to see and really model and, and adapt as well. It's key in life because you can't just be the same as you are as a child. You'll, you'll never change, you'll never improve, you'll never grow if you don't step outside of your comfort zone. When it comes to the resource groups, I was, I was, losing my words. I was heartened that you're expanding it beyond the high school and bringing it down to the middle level. I think that's key. Our middle students are, are in that weird, unique position. And I think they need it as much as our high school folks do. So putting that energy and effort into that is, is ideal. And then lastly, Paula, I love your energy about what you're, where your, your students are and really making sure that they feel inclusive and they are brought in and they're not separate from our other students because they're all our students and they all should work together because they're going to work together outside of school as well. So, so thank you for the dedication there. Much appreciated. But other than that, thank you, folks. This is great.
Dave?
Absolutely. Thank you all for all the work you did putting this together. This is fantastic. I, I think it says a lot about the values of Franklin Public Schools, but as well as the values of our community, that we want to learn, we want to do better. We want to make sure that our public school system is as open, inclusive, and diverse as we can possibly make it. And yeah, we talk a lot in this country about American exceptionalism. I can't think of anything that makes us exceptional more than our diversity. And I think that, that we have that as a core value of, and this was mentioned before by other members, acknowledging what we don't know, but also looking to improve. I think that's fantastic. I do have a couple of questions. And now, please, any panelists, feel free to chime in who feels appropriate to answer. The financial assistance policy, I think that was mentioned in regards to, I'm afraid of just lunch. Can we just, maybe just expand a little bit on that, like what does that entail?
I'm going to turn it to Miriam. She wasn't a panelist, but I think she would be a great, a great person to respond. She actually was really critical in terms of developing this policy.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. So the financial assistance policy allows families to apply for additional financial assistance for some of our fee-based programs. The policy is outlined on the, on our website in the finance department with the application. Generally, we look, generally, the majority of applications we see typically have applied towards preschool tuition, which we offer an opportunity for families to pay a portion or a reduced rate based on their income tier structure. We also offer some additional financial assistance for transportation. If they, if families don't qualify for free or reduced meals, which automatically waives a fee for transportation, there might be an additional reduction in a transportation fee because depending on their income level as well. We are also exploring some fee waivers for our solutions. I'm sorry, not our solutions program, but our lifelong learning programs, private music lessons. And I think, I think, I want to say community learning potentially. But we're, we are exploring that as well in depth. So that gives opportunities for families to participate in some of the fee-based programs as well as some of the activities that might be going on at the building level for student activities. And it gives principals the flexibility, if there's funding available, to, to apply the policy to certain other events as well.
No, absolutely, thank you. And, you know, and that slide mentioning of how the proportion of student population on free and reduced lunch having been increased and using that as a metric of socioeconomic status. I think it's fantastic that we have this financial assistance policy in place to be able to ensure that all students have access to our services because we certainly wouldn't want anyone to be excluded based on that. So I think that's wonderful that we're valuing that as well. And then from the next thing, maybe similar, on the, the homework policy. What, what does that entail? How is that, um, kind of been used to help students have more equitable access to homework support?
So I can, I can start. The homework policy was reviewed in 2017 and to the 17 and 18 school year. After a lot of deliberation and a lot of discussion between the policy subcommittee, members of the community, and then here at the full school committee. I think in terms of recognizing, there were a couple of things at play in terms of the homework policy. One was related to kind of homework as educationally sound and, you know, developmentally appropriate and trying to tackle and answer some questions there, given the age of students and how the previous policy that I never worked within. When I came on board, it was sort of in the, in the process of already having been revised. But it was, you know, kind of very, I think tightly prescribed and scripted in terms of numbers of minutes that could be expected. But there aren't the same opportunities in every household to have support with homework. Homework might be expected to have financial contributions from families for specific projects. So that's something that we've been, as a district, moving away from and, and have concerns about. So the homework policy aims to kind of, it's not that homework is completely gone. We still have homework, but it needs to be tied, you know, very directly to furthering an educational outcome. The student needs to be familiar and aware of what they need to do prior to attempting that homework and really ought not to involve or require a lot of parent or guardian support so that students can be independent. Again, recognizing that there's, there's such a thing as a homework gap. And, and we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to, to complete what they need to complete outside of school.
Yeah, thank you for elaborating on that. I mean, we know how much socioeconomic status can correlate with later, both educational success and then later success in life. And so making sure that we can do everything that we can to have all students be able to succeed at homework and then have the educational talent in the classroom. And I think it's really like grassroots-based level here that we can provide that assistance for. I think that's absolutely fantastic. So thank you for sharing that with us. Another thing, so when we talk about cultural proficiency and kind of learnable culture proficiency with the teachers and students, are we, and I, I know Principal Hannah mentions the, the resource groups. Are there, are there maybe formalized events or listening sessions dedicated to cultural proficiency? Or is that more something that teachers just kind of incorporate on their, on their own?
So Mr. Hannah is planning a formal listening event for the students in the resource group who've been working with Mr. M to share their voices with the faculty and staff. And so that's kind of one, one element of that. There have been other opportunities. I know at the high school, remind, a couple of years ago, members of the Diversity Awareness Club presented at a faculty meeting and shared some stories at the faculty meeting. It was very, very powerful to have. And I know that that's happened actually at a couple of other individual faculty meetings as well. In terms of working towards cultural proficiency, there's been a few district professional development opportunities. I do see teachers, when they're applying for course reimbursement, some are taking some graduate courses that are related to anti-bias education or culturally proficient skill development. So I think it's happening in a multitude of ways. I think I would aspire to have kind of a course for Franklin Public Schools teachers that is being run, that goes into more depth, where there's cohorts of teachers taking a course on a, on an annual basis as part of our formal professional development program. But that's kind of a goal or an aspiration at this point.
Excellent, thank you. And then, um, one last question regarding the educator diversification recruitment strategy. So the development of that strategy, is there a timeline or plan for a strategy to be developed? Or is that, will, will that be incorporated into the recommendations of the equity audit?
So I could see it being both. So the professional learning community will be completed, I think in May perhaps. And they're working us through kind of a workbook to develop some of those strategies and then some further recommendations. There are some things that we've put into place already. But I think one of the big takeaways that I have from the professional learning community is to really be thinking comprehensively about, you know, both the recruitment and the selection, but also retention and support. And so wanting to be sure, wanting to be sure that we're kind of thinking about, thinking about it comprehensively. So the plan and recommendations will kind of come from the professional learning communities, that the small group of us that's working, including Lisa Trainer, our Director of HR. And I imagine the equity audit may have some findings and some recommendations based on what we know from our, from our data.
Absolutely, thank you. That's, uh, that sounds to me very valuable, you know, the recommendations and the findings with that. Because now, as you mentioned, the importance of, you know, students having educators that look like them, but also the importance of students having educators that don't look like them and be able to have exposure to other cultural backgrounds that they otherwise may not have exposure to. It gets along, I think that's also extremely valuable to put forward our, our stated goals of diversity, equity, inclusion in our students and the values that we are sending Franklin students onto the world with. So thank you so much. Thank you all for the hard work you've put together on this presentation.
Thank you.
Elise?
This was such a jam-packed presentation. There was so much in here. And I just want to share, as with my colleagues, deep, deep gratitude to all the presenters, to all of you for putting this all together, for taking your time with it tonight and really being very thoughtful in your presentation. Much appreciated. And I love having the books here. I feel like we're in a classroom. I did just one word of kudos. I wanted to just express my gratitude, especially that many of you echoed the humble disclaimer that the district still has a ways to go. And we all know that the journey of continuous improvement is never finished. It's all about doing better once we know better. And I really appreciated hearing that a number of times tonight. So thank you.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks very much for the presentation. I'd like to echo the comments from my fellow school committee members. And I'm just really impressed with the, the depth, thoroughness of this presentation and the initiatives in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank everyone again. I know that it's 9:30 and we're only on item number two of the agenda. But this was amazing. Your Dr. Hearn's been promising this presentation for a while. So thank you so very much. Just very quickly, you know, I noticed Dr. Hearn, you had mentioned that the English learner population increased by 50%. Are we planning for these needs moving forward? Okay, so we're going to be building that into the budget.
I think you can expect there to be some requests in the superintendent's recommended budget related to our English learners.
Perfect, okay. And I know that I brought this up when Dr. Edwards first brought up the whole civics projects. I would really love to see some presentations from students. I was very excited, just if we could maybe sometime.
Yeah, it's definitely on the list. They're not ready at this moment, but it is on the list to invite some students and to present their civics projects.
All right, thank you. The online bullying forum, where does that go? You would say that there's like, oh.
So.
It's the building admin. Okay, so like when you go to the forum, you have to say like what school it is and it goes to the admin? Okay.
There's a workflow that it goes to the correct school just for privacy so that people know that the information they had goes. So it doesn't go to a whole group. It's who you select and it moves. I do believe, Dr. Hearn, are you copied on those as superintendent?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I just want to say to all of our staff that are here tonight for this very long presentation that we see you and we appreciate all of your service and dedication to our children and your students. So thank you all so very much. And go, and I, I wish more people stuck around to watch the presentation because it was really, really insightful. So will this be available to, for us to share?
So the video, we could probably see if we can clip it and have it as a standalone presentation.
That'd be awesome.
We can probably clip it from Zoom.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Let everybody. All right, on to discussion action items. Dr. Hearn?
Okay. The first discussion action item is the 2223 school calendar. So I'm proposing that you take the calendar in two segments. The first is, you know, kind of to set the first day, the last day, the two full day professional days and a few holidays and the break periods. We do a lot of discussion around the calendar with the Franklin Educators Association and our administrative team. And a chunk of what we talk about is the placement of the, the half-days for either professional development or conferences. So we're still kind of trying to think through the best placement of those. But I do feel like timing-wise, for everybody's planning purposes, to get the, the first days would be, would be important. So the draft that you have in front of you, we typically start with staff on Monday, August 29th. We contractually cannot start earlier than that. August 30th is the first day for students in grades one through 12. And then pre-K and K start a few days later because there's some orientation activities. That first day on the 29th, the morning is typically kind of professional learning as faculty and staff. And then faculty have the other second half of the day to prepare their classrooms. We have customarily not had school on Friday, September 2nd. It is often a full day for professional development. It has sometimes been a no-school day instead. The recommendation. Um, the recommendation here is that Friday, September second be a professional day. Um, my understanding from a while bef- before my time as superintendent is that the Friday was a no school day as part of a uh, sort of dialogue with the community about starting before the Labor Day holiday. Um, so you can see the holidays are in kind of that dark blue or purple, uh, dark purple color. I, uh, greatly respect, uh, and want to recognize that at Citizens Comment, there was a, uh, recommendation or request to consider DiVale, uh, which I believe is Monday, October twenty-fourth. Um, I did not put it in the calendar, but am making a recommendation to the school committee, um, to be thinking about DiVale for subsequent calendars. Uh, my hesitation is just that, um, it, I think merits a broader discussion about holidays in general. I think there may be other holidays that are recognized by families in the community. And so, um, my recommendation would be to, at a later date, uh, initiate an advisory committee. So there'd be, I'm not recommending that you vote on that tonight, but, um, at a later date, put together an advisory committee with members from the community, including the interfaith council and families and faculty and staff, uh, about additional, uh, holidays that may go into the calendar. My understanding from other communities is that's a process that they've been through, um, as they've looked at their calendars. Uh, and that's something that is, um, is happening in some other places. Tuesday, November eighth is, uh, election day. We traditionally, and I think it's practically very wise for us to have a professional day on the election day. And, uh, the other, um, vacation periods are traditional in terms of winter break, February break and April break. Um, with our one hundred and eightieth day being, um, Friday, June sixteenth at this point in time. Um, I have not typically built in additional, uh, snow days. If we had additional snow days, they would get added, um, following that. And, um, I guess my request this evening is, uh, that you approve this calendar as a first step with another, um, version coming back in March with half days.
Is there a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school calendar as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion questions? Camille? Dave Callahan?
Um, it looked great and, uh, I'm excited to, uh, to kind of start the advisory committee, uh, for the future calendars to see how, how they, they may shape up and what holidays you may be able to add.
Al?
Oh, yeah. Um, so mi- might have nitpicking at this point. It looks, it looks, it looks really, really good. Um, I know you'd mentioned the, the thirty-first was the date for pre-K and K. Um, I just didn't see a note on that date.
Um, we, we haven't set that yet. Yeah. We haven't set pre-K and K yet.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then, um, I was looking at the grid. I know the light purple is no school, dark purple's a holiday. Um, when it comes to Thanksgiving, the twenty-fifth, that was dark purple and some light purple. Was it just?
Okay.
Yeah, this is like nit- nit- nitpicking at this point. Um, and then, um, just to your point that you called out about the, the snow days, I think, thinking of like planning for vacations and whatnot, knowing like at least when the last day of school could be if we exhausted all of our days, just as a note, I think on the next draft, and we just put that there. Um, so folks, at least when they're planning summer vacation or what, whatnot, they can say, you know, worst case scenario, I can't leave Franklin until X date. Um, just gives us a piece of mind to, in planning, that's all. Uh, but other than that, I thought this was, was a great. So thank you.
Dave McNeil?
And for me, thank you.
Elise?
Um, I remember we've been through this process a couple of times before. So I guess my question is just how many of those half-day TV days or parent teacher conferences are we expecting? Like, is that still to be ironed out?
It's still to be ironed out. This year we have, I think, um, eleven. So four of those days are, um, parent teacher conferences at the elementary level with seven professional development days. And, um, at the, uh, middle and high school, they have two days for conferences.
Gotcha. Cause I think last time as a mom, I put this in my calendar and then the half-day, it's like, whoa, a little bit surprised by it, even as a school committee member. So it's good to, uh, keep on top of it, put it in the calendar as soon as we can. So, thanks. No other questions.
I won't say how many times I forgot about half.
I know. I forgot about Friday until just recently. Thank you, Keller Connection.
We can, um, make sure that that's really clear and anything that gets posted that half days will be added.
Megan?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, any more discussion questions?
Yes, one other thought. Um, and thank you for saying the half-day.
Half-day Friday.
On future versions, can we, you know, we'll provide this electronically, but can we have a link to the school calendar? So that if you, you look at this electronically, you can click on that, get to the document for the school calendar, uh, not school start times. So on half-days, you know, it's, it's, you know, eleven forty is the half-day versus now go back to the website and, and search for it.
I'll second that. When I started with the elementary, middle school thing, I had to go through handbooks. I couldn't find it anywhere. So I'm a teacher and I never remember when I let out.
So I should make sure I know, uh, add the link to the school hours on the calendar.
Somehow you have to make it done.
Proof. Because we're. Make them, like, connected better on the web.
Yes.
Somehow.
Or it could be included, maybe.
Ask your DLIs.
Yeah, like on the, on the, yeah, on the PDF version.
Yeah, just put like elementary, middle school, high school.
Perfect. Or put it right on the calendar?
Yeah, that works too.
Oh, I was thinking.
All right. Vote will come on the motion. All those.
I'm sorry. I have one thing that I want to add. I'm sorry. I do want to share that the, um, that the FEA's feedback was, uh, to have a half-day on the twenty-third, um, but as we're not talking about half-days.
Of what month?
December. December twenty-third. My recommendation at this time is to leave it as a full day and then we'll bring back the half-day recommendations to you, but I felt like I needed to share that. Now, yes, thank you.
All right. All right. All right. No more discussion questions? No, two. Vote will come on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Thank you. The second item for action is, um, a revision of policy GDQD, suspension and dismissal of support staff members. Um, so the changes that were discussed at the policy subcommittee meeting last week are in red. Uh, these are changes that are recommended by our school attorney.
Is there a motion to move policy GDQD suspension and dismissal of support staff members to a second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion questions?
No.
Are they good? All right. All right. Vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, voting carries. All right, Dr. Hearn, discussion only items.
Thank you. So the first, um, item in your packet is, uh, the latest COVID numbers. Although the numbers are available from the state for Franklin and for the state of Massachusetts related to the incidence per one hundred thousand and percent positivity, I actually did not, uh, put them in this report. My sense and my, my sentiment around this is that they're going to become increasingly less reliable uh, because of the change in testing that we're undergoing. Uh, testing for COVID is no longer, uh, you know, tightly controlled and highly centralized with every test being monitored for an individual being positive or negative. And so there are a lot of tests, um, including going out in the schools. And we can talk a little bit about how that, uh, has gone in the first week or two. Um, where, you know, thousands of people are testing and their negative test result, for example, may never get reported, uh, into the state system. So that's going to change the denominator and therefore going to change the accuracy of that percent positivity. So I just, I'm not feeling that it's, um, a, a super reliable. A, a super reliable metric, um, to be counting upon. Uh, and so I didn't grab it. Um, but we did grab other numbers, um, you know, specific to the Franklin Public Schools for your review. Um, we are continuing to collect, um, vaccine information. Uh, across all ages. We are seeing a decrease in cases, um, where, uh, as of this report, we had seventy-six positive cases. But, um, knock on wood, so far this week, we're continuing to see through our daily numbers, um, that, uh, cases are declining. Um, based on the new COVID health and safety protocols from the Department of Education that went into effect next week, last week. Um, the, uh, the idea of students in quarantine has really, uh, has really changed because, uh, students are now able to be, uh, present in the classroom. Um, and so we decided not to report that, uh, any longer. We are, um, continuing to monitor attendance on a daily basis. What I will say is that it seems to have leveled out. Um, and so we, we kind of seem to be at sort of a baseline level, uh, of, uh, absences in our buildings. It is not nearly what we saw a couple of weeks ago. Uh, in-person cases, uh, that week we had seventy-one and you can see how they're distributed across various, uh, various schools. So other than the numbers, uh, I think what we're, uh, what we're seeing is, um, thousands of test kits coming in. Um, and getting distributed, um, every other week once to faculty and staff. And, uh, then also to students. Um, Paul, I can probably share a little bit more.
Sure. I'd be happy to. Um, so we have about thirty-six percent of our students that have opted in for in-home testing program. I think that number will continue to grow. As you know, in my nightly communications, I keep spreading that link along. So, and I'm sure principals hopefully will be sending that through their newsletters. Um, we have about seventy-one percent of staff who have opted in. Um, we think the distribu- we feel we haven't gotten much negative feedback. We feel the distribution went well, um, definitely for staff. It went really well. Um, and then I know there were a couple of hiccups maybe at the high school level, just because of just the structure of the day and whatnot. But, um, I, we believe that everyone got their test, um, that opted in. Um, we had our, our next delivery of staff test today. So those will be going to buildings tomorrow. And then we'll expect our student delivery and staff delivery next week. So we're getting on a rhythm of our deliveries. So, um, we're hopeful. Um, I just want to reiterate, you know, what Dr. Hearn said is our numbers are coming down significantly. Today's numbers are probably the lowest we've had in months. So.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right. That it?
That's it.
Right. Questions, comments? Camille? Dave Callahan?
You know, um, uh, my daughter, uh, she got her, uh, came home with her test in her backpack last Wednesday. Um, and so, um, yeah, it was, it was a great process. Uh, if anybody is interested in, in kind of signing up for, uh, for their kiddo. How, uh, would you be able to kind of elaborate what they, uh, right now, like if anyone's listening, uh, for those listening, how they would go about doing that?
Sure. There's a link that goes out in the nightly communi- COVID update nightly communication. There's a link right in that letter. But we also have a link on our website in the COVID communication, in the COVID dashboard as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yep. And then, you know, if they sign up on, let's say, ta- test get distributed on Wednesdays. So if they sign up, you know, from Wednesday to the following Tuesday, it'll be the next week. It's not like, once they sign up, you don't, they don't get a test the next day. We, we have to keep it a process. Just because we're not CBS.
Yeah. Uh, so a question about the test kits. Uh, so I signed up my voice as well. Um, so they got two ta- two, two kits. Um, are we looking to kind of rationalize this so that we're, we're sending maybe one kit which has two tests versus two kits having four tests?
Yes, because I, I have to order them from Desi every two weeks and I only get a certain amount of tests every two week, one kid per student every, every two weeks. So that's why you get two tests per kit. So you can use one test one week and your following test the other week. However, Desi is suggesting that if you, if your child becomes symptomatic at any time during that week period, please use the test and test your child. So don't be afraid.
Perfect. Great. Good to have that back up then.
Yeah.
Um, and then the second question kind of pertains to the high schools. I know if we're not looking at the Franklin numbers, um, and we have that four percent positivity. How does that factor into our policy?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, so I think that, uh, as it relates to that policy, I think, um, I think that it needs to be reconsidered. I don't have a recommendation for you at this time, but I think it needs to be reconsidered because I don't think that four percent is, um, is super valid and reliable. With the current testing climate.
Thank you. Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Uh, it's good to hear that the at-home testing program, um, is rolling out overall well. And, uh, I was gonna ask the same thing that I did regarding the, uh, the four percent positivity. So, yeah, thank you for clarification on that.
I just want to say, I always say Dave Callahan and Dave McNeil, just for, for Christine, I'm trying to take minutes, so she knows who it is. Elise?
Sarah, we've been getting this, the reopening update and the back-to-school update for what seems like forever now. It's been a while, right? So this has sort of become almost like an expected part of our meetings. But I wonder with the data changing, you know, this, this is a lot of work to compile and, and takes time. And I wonder like, is this maybe going to be reimagined or, you know?
It's a great question.
Yeah.
So we did reimagine it at the beginning of the year because we thought we were under some slightly different circumstances. And that a lot of what had been in the reopening update, including things like teaching and learning and student services, would just fold into the natural rhythm of our, of what we do. Uh, but we started adding this back somewhere in the fall. Um, because we, we're starting to see, uh, either increased case numbers or we were trying to track vaccine. We're trying to track some things. Um, I think in general, we are trying to rethink how we're capturing data. What data do we need to keep? And then, um, it, so we don't, we haven't made any changes yet. Uh, on the, you know, kind of complementing that is also what types of changes might we make to communications home to families? Um, because I, the testing's a little bit farther out of our control than it had been previously too. And so, um, so we're also thinking about changing, changing our practice kind of on those two, on those two levels. Um, but have not yet made any changes.
Yeah, and it would make sense to do it together, right? And since the testing's changed, it's really comparing apples to oranges. And so we don't want to like give the impression that
Yeah.
the numbers are, that can be compared to August numbers or November numbers. And so.
Right. And it's hard to, I think, with, um, with a flood of kits going home. To, to think like the daily numbers, we've seen a pattern. We've seen a spike in numbers on Mondays because we have the, kind of the weekend buildup. But, um, that, with the flood of kits going home, that could also change the rhythm and the pattern too. And so, um, so we don't, we haven't settled on an answer, um, yet, but are thinking about that.
Yeah, yeah. And no pressure, no rush. I was just sort of out of curiosity. It ends up being a number of pages. And it's like, at this point, it's sort of old data. They would be good to reference if we need to at a certain point. But again, if it's apples and oranges, it's not as relevant to like making decisions today.
Right.
Um, I think that's, I think that's all I had. What, I did want the pages originally. I did. You're right. I was. I was like more charts, more colors, more pages. I was. But now if the numbers are different, as you said, the denominators are totally different. You can't, it doesn't compare. So thank you for reminding me for the record.
But change, I think change can be hard for people though too. And as the test kits went home, you know, we didn't want to change too much too soon. And we wanted to kind of live it for a couple of weeks and see, see what emerged.
Yeah.
To make sense.
And I think tonight's a good night to, for you to sort of set, like you have this row now at the top where the things are different and you sort of explain why. So, um, it's good for us to, you know, get used to it and change takes time, I guess. Okay. I'm done now. Thank you.
Megan?
Uh, I'm glad to hear that this, uh, the test, the home testing, uh, programs working and, yeah, it makes sense to be nimble with the data as things change. It's all I have.
Um, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Hearn and Ms. Morano for, you know, bringing up the, the tests that were sent home. Just kind of piggybacking off of that, um, I know at our last meeting, there was a comment made by a school committee member regarding chemicals on sterilized testing swabs. So I just wanted to kind of comment on that and state that as with any sterilized testing equipment, sterilized testing swabs are sterilized with a sterilizing gas. Um, it's a common chemical used for sterilizing medical equipment. Uh, if anyone has any questions or concerns, I would suggest, um, reviewing the information made available on the US Food and Drug Administration or US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website. That's it. Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda, Dr. Hearn?
Next on the agenda for your information is, um, a charge for the joint budget subcommittee. Uh, this was, uh, presented by Town Administrator Jamie Helen to the Finance Committee as well as to the Town Council. And I had shared this with our budget subcommittee, uh, when it was going out, but I thought that, uh, it warranted some conversation with, uh, the school committee. Uh, the Joint Budget Subcommittee, um, is, uh, is purpose is to promote, uh, communication and collaboration during the in-town's annual operating budget process. Uh, you can see in this, um, in this proposal, um, which has since been approved. the Subcommittee consists of four members of the Town Council, three members of the School Committee, and four members of the Finance Committee. And Jamie has outlined some responsibilities there, including promoting collaboration, broader communication and public engagement, keeping members respectively informed about the other committees, meeting at least once a year during the annual budget process and as often as necessary following that. Certainly would be of assistance to both me and the Town Administrator in developing strategies for meeting projected budget shortfalls or developing the budget in general, shortfall or not. And the authority is advisory. So there's no, you know, kind of opportunity for the Joint Budget Subcommittee to supersede any legal obligation related to kind of the school department and on their side, the town side, in terms of authority over, over respective budgets. So wanted to share that with you. I know that we'll be looking to plan a meeting soon.
Any questions? Camille? Dave Callahan? Al? David McNeil?
I just want to say, as Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, I think this is fantastic. I've been advocating for this for the past few months. I think this can be a wonderful opportunity for, now to have the open, just very informative for the citizens of Franklin and be fantastic for just cross-communication between us and Town Council and FinCom. So, yeah, thank you.
Elise?
Nope, just echoing what Dave said. It's to increase the communication between the schools and the town and the community. It's really important.
Megan?
Echoing Dave and Elise. That's it.
Meeting only once a year could be meet.
I think that's the minimum. So the expectation's meeting once per year and then at other times as, as needed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, moving right along, Information Matters, Superintendent Evaluation. Elise?
Yeah, we met at the end of January, and we'll be scheduling a workshop with the full committee to review the superintendent evaluation process. So we do have some time on that.
And just if you wanted to go on CPAC?
Sure. So the CPAC had a Q and A session during our last school committee meeting, which they reported had low attendance but had good discussion. And I'm waiting to hear about the date of their next scheduled board meeting, and we'll share details of any upcoming events as they are planned.
Thank you. Budget?
Yes, we'll have our next Budget Subcommittee meeting next Tuesday, February 15th at 5:30. So we'll look forward to that.
All right. Policy. Dave Callahan?
All right, we met last week. Much of our discussion was on revamping and redeveloping the bullying policy. And we're really hopeful that by the time that we next meet in full session, we may have like a first meeting of the policy as well. The next budget, I'm sorry, Policy Subcommittee meeting, that will be on March 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Joint PCC?
Yep. Yeah, so we met today. Steve Sherlock presented about Franklin Area Nonprofit Network to the GPPCC. Just to educate them around what it is and how they can leverage it and expand their reach to the community and improve their, their scope. We also talked about, or gave the go-ahead to the, the PCCs that they could start planning for field trips. It's a great thing. I know that they have had a field trip in the lower, lower grades in quite some time. So I think they're looking forward to this, and, you know, the buses are gonna be busy. And then they talked about just their, their normal activities to build their community. So, Remington, excuse me, not Remington, Jefferson was talking about the Red Sox Day where they, they actually rented out some seats and families purchased tickets to go and, and kind of just get some community, get some normal, normalcy. And other, other schools had talked about things they've done as well, like dining outs that's coming up to help raise some funds, and also some spiritware days that they're doing as well. Just, just once again, build camaraderie and then really get that culture back to some, some level of normalcy. But at the same time, understanding that they can't do everything that they've done in the past, but trying to do as much as they can to drive some culture. And then our next meeting is on the 21st of March.
21st of March. Okay, thank you. Elise, I'm sorry, I skipped over you for school wellness advisory council.
So we met on February 1st. We met with our wellness coach to get specific feedback on the policy. And Desi will review what we, what we went over that day, and then it will move to our Policy Subcommittee for their review. Oh, yeah, it's traveling around. Lots of eyes.
All right. Community relations, are we all done?
I'm all done.
Okay, sorry, I just, sorry. Our next meeting's February 17th. We've been discussing our community coffee chats as well as our upcoming legislative forum. We have reached out to the community asking for questions for our legislative panel. We've had some responses. But if anyone else is interested, please feel free to reach out. Our DEI Committee is meeting tomorrow, February 9th. You know, as Dr. Hearn and the rest of the panel alluded to earlier, you know, the committee breaks out into our subgroups such as curriculum, staff recruitment, school culture, and community engagement. You can be on the lookout soon for more information. And you can find our page under the Franklin Public Schools webpage in the About Us section, and then Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Substance Abuse Task Force, we met this morning, bright and early. Preparations for our social media night on March 24th at 6:00 PM at the high school has been kicked into high gear. Lucas, I know that you and other members are doing a lot of work. Could you maybe speak to a little bit about it?
Sure. And David, if you want to, you, did you want to? Okay. So we're excited. You can expect a more formal invitation to the event with some communications and some marketing around the event. But basically, we're really focused on providing the next in our series of critical conversations. If you remember back in November, we held one on substance use and mental health. This next segment or episode of Critical Conversations will focus on social media and its use, and it's, and its impact. And we're going to cover a lot of ground, and we are fortunate through some support from Jeff Roy, our state rep, to, to bring a keynote who specializes in this area, a Wall Street journalist and researcher who's done a lot of work on the impact of social media on teens. So we're excited to anchor that, that presentation and provide our community with some expertise in that area. And we'll also have more, more to share on that with some panel discussion and breakouts. But once again, I'll, I'll share more once we have all the details clarified.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hearn, moving along, new business.
Sure. At the next meeting, you can expect the Superintendent's Recommended Budget and a budget discussion with the entire committee. I'll bring back a school calendar anticipated with half-days, and there may be some policy from the Policy Subcommittee.
Consent agenda. Dr. Hearn?
Okay, I recommend approval of the minutes from the January 25th, 2022 School Committee Meeting as detailed. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling $4,116 from music parents for in-house enrichment as detailed. And I recommend acceptance of a check for $2,910.16 from Grin and Barrett Enterprises for supplemental supplies for FHS as detailed.
I think they're a photography company.
Yes, they are. That is the cutest name. That's correct.
Do our school photography at the high school. All right. That's, that's right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion questions?
No.
All right. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, payments of bills? There an order to stoke payroll?
I reviewed payroll. It's an order.
Okay. All right, finally, we will be adjourning to executive session and will not be returning to open meeting. All right, so I'm going to say all this. Ready? Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the FEARN unit as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to consider an open-meeting law complaint against public officers, namely the members of the school committee, filed with the committee by Kyle Thompson and dated February 3rd, 2022. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive discussion, exec-, executive session as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, vote will come on the motions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call with executive session.
Roll call vote. Camille? Yes. Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
David McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Me Spencer, yes. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll see you on March 8th.